Folks, as soon as we have a green light here, we'll be ready to go. All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 21st, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. You may be watching on cable TV or on edinamn.gov, live meetings, or Facebook, and you're going to be able to participate a couple of times in the meeting tonight if you so desire, both on community comment and when we get to the public hearing matters that are in front of us this evening, there's three of those. And actually, four, I guess. And the number you'll want to call is 888-504-7949. It's on the screen now. And then there is that conference ID number, the passcode, 450490. Make sure you use that conference code and then press star one on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get into the queue to speak. An operator will introduce you when it's your turn to speak. If you call in for community comment, remember that you cannot talk about anything that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, so keep that in mind. And then keep your comments to three minutes, as Director Bennerott has instructed folks, both here and in the virtual world. So having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting of the Edina City Council to order for June 21, 2022, and request our Clerk Sharon Allison to do the roll call.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
And Councilmember Anderson's accent, Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter in front of us is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening that's been published to the public and to the members of the council. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to amend the meeting agenda or from a staff standpoint? All right, hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Councilmember Staunton to approve the meeting agenda for this evening's meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And now it is time for community comment. If you've got a matter of concern that you wish to discuss with the council, you should feel free to either come up to the, one of the side podiums, I think would be best. Let's get up on the screen the number again, so folks can start to get ready if they're calling in. That number again, 888-504-7949, conference ID 450490. And then we're going to ask our fellow residents first in the meeting at City Hall, if anybody wants to address the council, and I see a couple of folks coming forward, and we'll visit with them about something that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing this evening. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Don Joe Hanson, address is 6810 Langford Drive in the Manor Homes of Edina Development. And the reason I'm here is because the fire department has issued a permanent--
Could you pull that microphone up a little bit higher?
Sure. The fire department has issued a permanent moratorium on any natural gas grills on patios or decks at the Manor Homes of Edina. We've been, this development was built in the early 1980s and continually upgraded, and actually, most recently, we spent 100, 1.8 million on new siding, high-grade vinyl, along with LP Smartside. We installed a new lifetime composition roof at the, to the tune of $1 million. Manor Homes of Edina, it's a, consists of 20 buildings, each with an entryway that leads to four units, two upstairs and two downstairs on the ground floor. So it's not a high-rise or a medium-rise, it's a very quiet community with longtime owners, and from day one, we've been able to have natural gas grills on our deck and We've never had any problems. We adhere to the rules and regulations. We have to have a gas line piped in with the outside valve, shut-off valve, no wheels. The grills have to be screwed into the deck at least 18 inches from the building. And then, as I mentioned recently, we were told that we have to remove all our grills by June 30th, which is next week, of course. And there are approximately, maybe just a dozen owners at Manor Homes that have these natural gas grills. I should add that several years ago, the fire department came through and said that they wanted to remove, we should remove all, draw out pictures, mirrors, individual unit mats from our entryways, and subsequently, it was rescinded very shortly after that. So having said that, I just would like to say that we enjoy grilling, just like every one of you. Minnesota, tonight is a beautiful evening to be grilling. We would love to continue to do this, and perhaps we can, you can grandfather it in, or you can issue a permit or re-inspect the current grills we have, but please don't deny us the opportunity or the, this generous, beautiful pastime of being able to grill outside. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Hanson, thank you for those comments. We've got our Assistant City Manager with us this evening, I'm sure she's been taking good notes, and we'll try to stay in contact with your, with your group. And do we have your contact information or somebody's contact information?
I did email this to the council this morning.
Okay.
By name and address.
All right, very good.
Email and phone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them during community comment? All right, let's turn then to anybody that might be listening in through different medium. Again, the number 888-504-7949, participant passcode is 450490. Remember to press star one on the telephone keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and then an operator will introduce you, and then Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. And remember, it can't be a matter that's on the agenda tonight or a matter scheduled for a future public hearing. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them?
No, sir, I don't have anyone on the line at this time. I would recommend we wait maybe a minute before moving on, since there is a delay with the broadcast. My clock shows that it's 7:11, so I will come back to you at 7:12 or when I have a caller, whichever's first.
Very good, thank you. All right, thank you. Our practice has been that the city manager will respond to community comments made at the prior city council meeting. Tonight, we've got Assistant City Manager Lisa Schaefer with us, as I mentioned earlier, and she will respond to the comments from the last meeting.
This is an easy response this evening, there were no comments at the last meeting.
All right, very good, thank you. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved.
Second. Member Staunton moves the adoption of the consent agenda, Member Pierce seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And now we're on to special recognitions and presentations. We've got one item in that category this evening, and that is going to be presented by Heidi Lee, our Race and Equity Manager for the city of Edina. It is our annual, or what has become our annual Race and Equity Summary Report. She's given it the last couple of years, and this is for 2021. And you look refreshed from Juneteenth. She was working very, very hard on a very hot day on Sunday over at Centennial Lakes. We had a great group of volunteers there, working and led by Heidi and MJ Lehman from the city that did just a terrific job. So thank you for, that program was just terrific all the way through, and people coming and going from 11 to 3 that day, it was, it was really, really well done.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome this evening.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide you an update of the Race and Equity work in the city in 2021, as well as provide you an update of the Race and Equity Plan for this year, and also to give you the actions for Race and Equity in 2022 as well. So first off, I would like to be able to just give you a quick look back of 2021 in Race and Equity. And so you'll notice that there was definitely a lot of highlights in 2021, starting off with the Days of Significance Observation Process was approved by City Council in February of 2021. With this observation process, there was 16 total Days of Significance, which were honored in many different ways through social media, through city-owned facilities, as well as even the city website, and to be able to be inclusive of the many demographics that we have in the city. The next one is that the city, then, City Council approved participating in the Just Deeds Project on June 15th of 2021. The city of Edina is one of 14 cities that are participating in the Just Deeds Project. And so, along with the recommendation of staff and many community members, the city did join that Just Deeds Project, which helps owners renounce discriminatory covenants that they have on their deeds. Over 240 residential property owners have completed the Just Deeds Form on the city website, along with, then the handoff process is working with lawyers that are wanting to be able to do pro bono work, and they would help the residential owners with that process. Along with the Just Deeds participation, the city went ahead and recognized that there was 52 city-owned properties that had discriminatory covenants. And as of June 18, 2021, those discriminatory covenants were renounced off city property. And one of the reasons why I highlight the 52 city-owned properties is, one of those city properties was Garden Park. Garden Park was one of those, was a work plan item that where the Yancey family would be recognized through the renaming of a city facility. And with the approval from the Heritage Preservation Commission, as well as the Human Rights and Relations Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission, it was recommended that Garden Park be renamed after the Yancey. And so with that, the, before it could be honored, the Yancey family could be honored, we went ahead and renounced that discriminatory covenant on Garden Park as well. And so that allowed the city, as well as staff members and many community members, to have a celebration on October 4th at the newly renamed Yancey Park, where we had many Race and Equity Task Force members come to celebrate, as well as Councilmember Pierce and Co-Chair Jesse Kingston were able to provide remarks on the event. Another point of significance in 2021 is that the City Council approved Juneteenth as a city-observed holiday. Even though with the federal government indicating that it is a federal holiday, the city of Edina was one of the very first, first ring suburbs to go ahead and have that as an observation day. And then another highlight in 2021 is that there was a citywide goal to have 88%, or excuse me, 70% of full-time staff go through a Race and Equity training. I'm happy to report that at the end of 2021, 88% of full-time staff members went ahead and completed that training. I will also note that the training was facilitated in-house, and when I say in-house, it was all done by staff members within the city, and more specifically, within the Racial Equity Advancement Team. And then also looking at the diversity or the demographics of our staff members, there was an incremental change with BIPOC, or Black Indigenous People of Color, staff members, whether they were full-time, part-time, or seasonal. So when I first started in 2019, the percentage was 4.5%, and at the end of 2021, there was, the percentage was at 6.8%. So knowing that there is incremental change in the BIPOC demographics, there has been intentionality in the hiring process, as well as the recruiting process. For some of the process changes is making sure that we have a welcoming and inclusive statement on the city website, utilizing many different sources, such as the League of Minnesota Cities, the city website, and many job posting avenues to have a wider, wider choice of recruiting for different candidates. And then also having an increasing awareness and conversations with the hiring managers when they are hiring for positions. And then lastly, what you see in front of you is the Quality of Life Survey in 2021. You'll notice that on the right-hand side in 2021, 68% of the respondents indicated that it was essential or very important that local government focuses on creating a diverse and inclusive city, which, which has increased by 12% since 2019. And so to be able to highlight some of those pieces that, some of the things that occurred in 2021, I'd like to be able to talk about the upcoming changes in the, in the quarterly Race and Equity Update that you'll be seeing. So as you know, the Race and Equity Implementation Plan provided community feedback on how the Race and Equity work should look like. At the end of 2018, the Implementation Plan has been a source for departments and divisions to engage in the Race and Equity work. As many items are nearing completion, the city is transitioning into a new process to deepen the work. In 2022, the departments developed their work plan and then had conversations with the Race and Equity Division to talk about how Race and Equity is embedded in their work plan items. The purpose is for departments and divisions to align their work with Race and Equity, and in addition, department-driven work plans being added to the report, the Race and Equity Advancement Team has also created work plan items that have been added into the report. On this slide, you'll notice that this is how the quarterly updates had been given to you, where it would indicate the Race and Equity Implementation Plan, as well as items depending on their status. So it would indicate if it has been completed, completed ongoing, or if it is in progress. What you'll notice going forward on this particular slide is that the Race and Equity Implementation Plan work plan items are no longer reflected on that. And the reason being is that we wanted to be able to have the, as the work continues, the items that will only be appearing will be referred to as just the Race and Equity Plan. And this is to make sure that there are new work plan items that will continuously be added each year from departments and divisions. And then to move into some upcoming actions that staff members will be taking to advance the Race and Equity in the city. As Mayor Hovland had indicated, that there was a Juneteenth event, and so that happened. Even though it was a hot day, there was many folks that had visited the event, and I had spoken to some of the attendees, some of the, the comments that I heard is that it was really good to be able to see Edina wanting to celebrate Juneteenth. Some of it was also, I wanted to come here just to see what Edina's Juneteenth looks like. So knowing that there is a wide variety of people wanting to see what Juneteenth is all about in Edina, and knowing that there is going to be a process of continual change in the way that the event is structured. And then also, one thing in 2022 is that the citywide goal for all staff, full-time staff, to have completed the Equity Training will be at 100%. So that is the goal. There are four training sessions scheduled in 2022 for that goal to be completed. In addition to full-time staff training, there will also be a training program and implementation for part-time and seasonal staff as well. And then lastly, the Values Viewfinder, which is a tool that you have heard of quite recently, will be utilized in various city processes or projects. One that you have heard of is the Fire Station Selection. The other one that has been mentioned is the Capital Improvement Plan, and we are also planning to work with Parks and Rec to look at the Straka Visioning Plan as well. And then also, lastly, is to establish data collection to be able to measure Race and Equity impact, the assessment of that. And so I know that has been a very important item for not only council, but as well as the community to be able to measure that impact. And so that will be also a focus of the Race and Equity Division, to be able to meet with the different departments and be able to collect what is the data that they currently have, and then to be able to create metrics to show that, what the impact will be on the community. And then lastly, before I conclude, I would like to thank the staff members who engage in the Race and Equity work in the city. I'd also like to thank the staff members and community members and organizations who work collaboratively to make Juneteenth happen, and then to thank the Race and Equity Task Force members who have provided the foundational source and structure of the Race and Equity work in Edina. Thank you for your support.
Yeah, it's really wonderful to get this report annually on, on the work that you're doing and the progress you're making as a community. And councilmembers, questions or comments that you want to make? Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, could you tell us who the Race and Equity team are? Is it a pretty big team, or do you have their names?
The REIT team?
The names of the staff, yeah, the REIT team.
There is about 13 of them.
Okay.
And so if you're, if you're looking for all of them, I can certainly name them, or if you're looking for the, for the group that helped, were the core group for training, I can certainly name those as well.
Well, I'd love to have that as part of the record, because I'd like to recognize their work. So, yeah, tell us who the, who the core trainers were, and then I've got a couple of the questions, if you could.
Okay, so for the, the core trainers for the team, we have Chad Milner, as well as Jeff Brown, MJ Lehman, and then Stephanie Hawkinson.
Okay, terrific.
And then I also wanted to add, of that team, we were able to facilitate 13 trainings last year.
Fantastic, thank you. My second question is about the city-owned properties and renouncing the racial covenants. 52, is that all of them, or is it complete now?
Yes, all of the city facilities, yes.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And then finally, you've got the Values Viewfinder. Can we get one of those, the city council members? I'd love to, it's a little thing, we can twist around, right? I would love to have one, and I think my Pierce would as well. So thank you so much, and thanks for a great report and your diligent work, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other councilmembers, questions, comments? Councilmember Pierce?
Thank you, just a very, very, very brief comment, just to say thank you. I think you're doing a fabulous job. I am proud of just seeing where the city was and how we're progressing. And so I just think it's, it's really cool to see, and I'm glad that you're on board and helping lead the charge.
Thank you.
The other thing about the, Councilmember Staunton, go ahead.
Well, I'd echo that, and I do find the, the statistical information interesting, how the, you know, it's kind of the peeling of the onion, or people, everybody's kind of getting on board little by little, so that's great, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson headed in a direction I was wondering about it. On the Just Deeds Program, did we see much activity, or have we seen much activity in 2022 on that from homeowners, or don't we get those reports?
With the Just Deeds Program, there's many different ways that a residential owner could go ahead and renounce those deeds. They can certainly go through the support of the city, or they can go ahead and process those on their own. And so there's many pathways for that. So for example, if a person is going through the city to be able to get that support, we would then, it would be a handoff or partnership to the lawyers that are working on that, and then it would also depend on the type of deed they have, they have as well. So sometimes we may not get that information of the total numbers, but we are working with the Just Deeds lawyers to be able to have more of a streamlined process. So I can, I can hopefully get more numbers, more accurate numbers for you as well.
All right, good. I can see where that's a little bit difficult to define, but I'm sure people are working on it. The other thing I wanted to just compliment you on was, from an inclusion and welcoming standpoint, how well you represent our city. When we had folks from the, our Asian-American community that wanted to have a role with respect to Juneteenth, which would, in some cities, probably be unusual, but in our community, folks from the Edina Asian-American Alliance and the Edina Chinese-American Association really wanted to be supportive, and it ended up that we had two youth, one from the Black Student Union at the high school, and another from the Asian-American Alliance, be able to read resolutions right after I gave my remarks at 2 o'clock, and I just thought that was terrific. So thanks for including other groups that wanted to be included on a, on this event.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then just, the group that was last in terms of performance, this 2911 group that came, they're here for a month from South Africa, and one of the, one of the South Africans told me afterwards, he said, geez, it's hot here. And you couldn't disagree with them on Sunday, it was hot. But that was a fantastic group, and I encourage people in our community, if you see where they might be performing, I think they were going to be down at Westminster sometime this week, but if you look up 2911, they've got their own website, look at that calendar, and if you can catch that group singing in the next month, I'd encourage you to do so. They were fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to public hearings now. We've got four this evening, as I mentioned earlier. Our practice has been, since we've been working during COVID, to postpone decisions on the actual public hearing matter until the next meeting of the city council. We've been requested by staff to do that on the first matter we're going to hear this evening, but on the other three, there's some urgency to it, so we're going to try to deal with those matters yet this evening. And one is a new intoxicating, potential intoxicating, and Sunday sale liquor license for the Edina Theater, which is going to be back in operation soon, and so there's some urgency to that. And then a right-of-way easement on White Cliff Road, and then potential authorization of the sale of bonds. We're going to try to deal with those three matters yet this evening, but for the first public hearing that involves a potential issuance of a conditional use permit and a variance for Interlock and Country Club, we're going to deal with that in the usual manner, and that would be to keep the public hearing open night, take testimony, but keep it open until July 5th, and then continue the action on that conditional use permit and variance to our July 19, 2022 meeting, which is our only council meeting in July. So Emily Bodicker from our planning staff, our Assistant City Planner, is here this evening, as well as Joel Livingood, the General Manager and CEO of Interlock, and will make a presentation on what they're proposing to do in terms of additional potential improvements over there. And so I'll turn now to Ms. Bodicker for her staff presentation. Ms. Bodicker?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, pardon me to interrupt, but on the closing of the public hearing, one late change after the stage agenda was printed, is that this public hearing will be closed on July 11th.
July 11th?
Instead of the 5th, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks for that. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Interlock and Country Club is located at 6200 Interlock and Boulevard, and they are requesting a conditional use permit and a building height variance to redevelop some of their existing facilities for their members. Interlock in is owned R1 Single Dwelling Unit District, and is guided as public and semi-public, as well as low-density residential in the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed expanded facilities include a 15,000-square-foot lodge with food service, a 17,000-square-foot fitness center, five outdoor clay tennis courts, two indoor hard-surface tennis courts, two pickleball courts, and three platform tennis courts. A conditional use permit is required for the new structures that they're proposing. The overall number of tennis courts is reduced from nine to seven, and then the Country Club is proposing to add pickleball courts and platform tennis courts as well. Golf clubs are permitted uses in the R- courts and platform tennis courts as well. Golf clubs are permitted uses in the R1 zoning district, and golf course clubhouses and accessory buildings over 1,000 square feet are conditional uses. There's no stated number of accessory buildings that are allowed on golf course property, but the buildings that are over 1,000 square feet require a conditional use permit. Generally, the facilities that are proposed tonight would be located and are replacing the existing racket courts that are on-site today. Those are to the west of the existing clubhouse. Today, the existing racket courts are roughly 30 feet from the nearest property line, and the new facilities, as proposed, will be 50 feet away from the property lines to meet today's zoning requirements. There are, or there is additional landscaping that's proposed to the project area. There's a double row of six-foot-tall evergreens, a row of Japanese yew, and a solid fence along the north property line to provide screening to residential properties. The facility area is lit and meets the city's lighting requirements, and the applicant has also worked with a sound engineer for the site to help mitigate excess sounds. The proposed structures match the architectural style and the materials of the clubhouse. Those materials include brick, stucco, and trim detailing. On the screen here is the proposed lodge building, the north and east elevations. That is the 15,000-square-foot building and is labeled as Building O on the plans. That building is located closest to the clubhouse in the southeast corner of the project area, and there is a proposed patio that's included that is centrally located within the site and is on the west side of the building that will be mostly blocked by proposed buildings and additional landscaping. This is the north and east elevations of that building. On the screen here is the south and the west elevations of that proposed building. The 17,000-square-foot fieldhouse structure is located just north of the lodge building and is labeled as Building L. Both proposed buildings are located within 1,500 feet of the primary structure on-site and are compatible with the architecture and style, which is one of the conditions of the accessory buildings that are over 1,000 square feet. And both of the proposed buildings meet the city's 95-foot setback requirement. So here's the west and south elevations of Building L, and here are the east and north elevations of that building. The covered tennis courts require structure height variance from 20 feet for accessory buildings to 39 feet. The existing clubhouse on-site is 52 feet tall. The proposed height of the tennis structure is similar to the existing golf building on-site, which is 37 feet. The additional height is required for this tennis structure for it to be functional. The roof is a pitched roof as opposed to a flat roof, and it will blend in with the neighborhood. And it was noted that because of the zoning of the property, there were questions at the Planning Commission on the height of a residential home, and a residential home on a wider lot may be built up to 40 feet in height. So here's the tennis structure, the east and the west elevations, and that's labeled as Item J on the plans that were submitted, and the north and south elevations of that tennis structure. Staff believes that the criteria to grant a conditional use permit has been met. The proposed project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the city's code requirements with the exception of the height. Golf courses are permitted use within the R1 zoning district, and uses accessory to a golf course are also permitted. Accessory buildings over 1,000 square feet or more are conditionally permitted within the R1 zoning district. Staff also believes that the variance criteria has been met. The height of the tennis, the covered tennis structure is the reason the variance is required tonight. The proposed height of 39 feet is greater than the allowed 20 feet but remains shorter than the primary structure on-site and is similar to other buildings. The additional height is required for the tennis courts and tennis structure to be functional. Granting the height variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The pitched roof and the proposed height will blend into its residential surroundings. A comment report has been included in the packet with comments from Better Together, and the public hearing comment period will remain open to noon on July, noon on July 11, like Sharon had mentioned. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their June 15 meeting, and they recommended approval of the conditional use permit and height variance with a six-to-one vote. So tonight, staff's recommendation is that the city council approve the conditional use permit for the expanded facilities and the building height variance from 20 feet to 39 feet at Interlock and Country Club, at 6200 Interlocken Boulevard, subject to the findings and the conditions outlined in the staff report. And I will note that one of those conditions is the hours of operation of the fitness center, the food service, and the tennis and hockey that takes place on-site. And with that, I can answer any questions. And like Mayor Hovland said, Joel Livinggood is also here tonight to give a short presentation and to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from council members for Emily Bodicker at this point in time? All right, good. Thanks for that thorough presentation. I think Joel Livinggood is going to come up and make a presentation on behalf of the applicant, and then we'll open it up for public testimony, either live in City Hall or virtually. Mr. Livinggood, welcome. Would you give us your name and address, please, your business address?
Certainly. Joel Livinggood, Interlock and Country Club, 6200 Interlocken Boulevard. Just going to move this into, there we go, full-screen mode. Mayor Hovland, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and share a little bit more about our project. I thought the presentation by Emily was very thorough, and so I'm just going to hit on a couple of highlights here on the site that I think are helpful. First, just a couple of clarifying points. The club previously had nine tennis courts. We actually have seven courts today, and are proposing seven with this plan. We also have platform tennis courts and pickleball today. So just a few things to highlight, I think, on the plan that would be helpful. Emily talked a little bit about the tennis structure that sits there at Letter J. That's positioned 200 feet from the nearest neighboring property. One of the important parts to Interlocken throughout the planning process was to take what we've learned through some of our past experiences at council and through the planning process with neighbors, and consider those as we put the site together. And so placing that structure more than twice the required setback from any neighboring properties was an important consideration on the site. Additionally, we've heard some comments regarding sound and other things on property, and so we shifted one of the activities that has the most sound, pickleball, from kind of that, what it would be the current northwest corner, kind of up there by Z, down to the east, more interior to our property there at Letter K. And we talked a little about the adjustments we're making from a light perspective as well. We engaged a lighting engineer that does sports lighting for several of the city's own parks and schools to significantly reduce the glare and the light trespass on any neighboring properties. And I think overall, the shift of the site 20 feet further south will also mitigate some of those concerns. We talked a little bit at the Planning Commission meeting about kind of how you could adjust the site to address some concerns around maybe activities at the restaurant and in other spaces. And we've really spent a lot of time over the course of the last several months playing with what would be the best layout for all of these activities. And as Emily pointed out, the patio of the restaurant sits the most interior of that property at Letter N. And for those of you who have been to the site, where it sits on property as it relates to any neighboring properties would really be not visible in any fashion. There is 10-foot-high fence around all the tennis courts that gets wrapped in a windscreen. And that windscreen certainly has some properties that reduce sound as well as the visibility in addition to the landscaping outside of that, outside of that fence. And so I think, you know, in summary, throughout this planning process, important for us to take into certain consideration the needs of our neighbors, and we hope we've done that over the course of the last year with our parking lot project that, at least from preliminary feedback for a lot of folks, particularly on Waterman, has at least met or exceeded expectations. And we think we've got a plan here that greatly addresses some of our needs but also enhances the site for those in the surrounding area as well. Obviously, Interlocken holds a wonderful place in the Edina community, and we want it to be one of the, you know, one of the best clubs in the country. And we're excited to showcase that here in the entire city as we approach the 2030 U.S. Women's Open. And this is a big part in getting ready for that. So certainly appreciate the time and happy to answer any questions related to plan and project.
Sure. I think that was good supplemental testimony. Thank you for that. Are there questions for Mr. Livinggood? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have just one short question, and that is, I see one of the conditions is to end the hockey at 10:00 p.m. When are you currently ending the hockey in the wintertime?
10:00 p.m.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Councilmember Stotan?
Just clarifying, there's no further expansion of the boundary of the property, is there?
Correct. This actually becomes further interior from where it sits today. So today, we sit 30 feet off the north line, and we'll be 50 feet off the north line of this plan and no change to the west. We do shift a little bit south, kind of into our driving range property. You can kind of see on this plan, if my mouth shows up. Waterman Avenue, I guess now the private drive about here at Letter X starts to jog to the left, and we straighten that road out. So it does shift a little bit to the, to the south, but still quite a ways from any neighboring, neighboring properties.
But the boundaries of your property are not expanding.
Correct. No, the boundaries stay exactly as they are today.
All right, thank you.
What's the status on the cul-de-sac or the roundabout on B and then the gate?
We're getting really close. We just finished paving the lot yesterday. We finished striping this morning, and gate installation started this morning as well. So by the end of the week, we expect that project to be complete, although I'm sure now that I said that, it probably won't be based on the past nine months.
All right. Good. Thank you. Other questions from council members? All right. Very good. Standby, Mr. Livinggood.
Certainly. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
May have questions that come up. You may have some folks in the audience that wish to testify. I'm going to, I'm going to open this matter up now for public testimony. This is a public hearing matter. Council will not make a decision on the potential conditional use permit issuance and variance until we've heard all the testimony involved, and then taken testimony subsequently until July 11. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter? Yes, please come forward. And I think if you want to use one of the side podiums and make sure you give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a little yellow warning light when the time comes to start wrapping up your comments. Go ahead.
My name is Chrissy Lamson. I live at 509 John Street. My property is directly adjacent to Interlock and Country Club.
Could you enhance the volume on her speaker, please? I noticed that on the other one too was a little bit, at least for my ears.
I'm green, so can I go?
Go ahead and start again.
Okay. My name is Chrissy Lamson. I live at 509 John Street. I'm directly located adjacent to the western border of Interlock and Country Club. Should I continue?
Go ahead.
Our neighborhood has already been negatively impacted with your approval of last summer's parking lot project. I'm just curious, have any of you been out to see the parking lot since it's been completed? It is obvious that Interlocken has a multi-year expansion plan to the west, and that this is only the second project in a long list. ICC has not been transparent, and how can Edina be a steward to all of us if we don't know the full master plan? This means Edina's decisions are being made blindly and have no understanding of the full environmental and neighborhood impacts. I'm asking you to please consider helping the two parties to come up with a cohesive plan with some considerate guidelines to help satisfy the neighbors on the north and west and of ICC's expansion plans into our neighborhood. As our homes and neighborhood are in close proximity to the club's accessory buildings, including a lodge, indoor racket club, restaurant, bar, outdoor patio with fire pits, fitness center, parking lot, and yet to be announced, undisclosed projects. I have questions. How many of you have come to the site? One of the city planners last week asked, is the parking lot new? I mean, that's just ridiculous. And what have the sound studies come up with that Interlocken is supposedly do, excuse me, doing? And are the courts' nearest residences interchangeable to pickleball and platform tennis? I propose, my first proposal would ask that a solid fence 15 feet or higher be installed on the northern, or the western border as well as the northern border for the homes that bump up against the property for noise and lighting buffering for all the neighbors. It should be along the entire length of the north and west, since our homes and lawns will mostly be affected by this obtrusive expansion into our privacy, our lives, our neighborhood. This is only fair and respectable. Proposal two, the restaurant-bar service hours limit to 10:00 p.m. A policeman told me, nothing good happens with booze at a public, not a public place, but at a bar after 10:00 p.m. And this is in a neighborhood, correct? A quiet neighborhood? Hockey, we ask that they limit the hockey to 8:00 p.m. We already hear the shots against the boards and suffer the lighting from the rink, which shines directly into our living rooms and our bedrooms. All construction, for the construction traffic for this CUP should be restricted to entering and exiting ICC's main entrance and not on Waterman Avenue. I'd like to know the plans for that. We were led to believe that Waterman will now be strictly residence and not construction traffic. Please show us that you can actually represent ICC and our neighborhood. This review process should not be just a foregone ICC approval, which we've seen in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamson. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Frank Thomas. I live at 505 John Street, and I've lived there for 47 years. In 46 years, I could look out the back off of my deck and see nothing but trees and green grass. The last year, now I see a parking, 105-space parking lot tilted towards us. I see the tennis courts, which I have never seen in 46 years. I see the tennis shed or lodge, whatever you want to call it. Never saw it before. I now can see the clubhouse. I now, today, we had a bouncy house that we could see off my deck with music. Two weeks ago, we had rap music. But, fine, they're replacing a 1,900-square-foot facility with 44,000 square feet. Three new buildings replacing one. My big problem is the tennis. That's going to be, we've got no distinct dimensions, but I believe it'll be 120 by 110 and stick 40 feet high. That'll be squarely in my view. When I open my curtains in the morning, I see the parking lot. Now I see it with cars. Now I see it at night, because it's lit. It's the last thing I see before I go to bed. But this huge building, 120 by 110, 40 feet high, sitting right out on the west end. They didn't put it close to their buildings. They put it closest to ours. And the comparison, because number one, that main clubhouse was built before zoning. You probably wouldn't allow it 56 today. It sits up on a hill. It's a long ways away. The 37-foot golf thing they talk about attached by a cover to the clubhouse. It's a long, long way from the tennis facility. Number two, compare this facility to a house that's being built. The facility is bigger in square footage than the lot that the house is being built on. And the house is a walkout, so from the front, it's not 40 feet, only from the back. Because our backyard, there was a nice concave meadow before they filled it in and put a parking lot in. So, fine, they want to expand. This building is ridiculous sitting on the west end. If they want to do it, let them put it towards their parking lot. They can also face the patio to the west, so we don't hear it. And they have not worked with the neighborhood, regardless of what you said. We had a meeting that was basically a line drawing with no dimensions in April, and they said nothing was finalized. And then this appears a month later on May 12, when it was published. So I just want, my biggest beef is that tennis building, I don't think we should see it in our neighborhood. It's, if you come over and look at it, you'd understand. And my friends, I was a member there for 25 years, and I still have a lot of friends. They come over and see this parking lot. From my deck, they're embarrassed. And if you come over and look at it, you'll see what we're talking about. Line drawings, pictures don't do it justice. You got to come and see. This was degraded our neighborhood, and this building is in a degraded more of the tennis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Berta Sortland Ryan, and I live at 513 John Street. I'm here tonight in opposition to the CUP, but understanding that it's most likely going to be pushed through. And for that reason, I'd like to talk about my request. talk about my requests for compromise. There are four, and they go in order of most importance to least importance. Number one would be an 8:00 p.m. food and beverage closing time, most importantly, the beverage part. Number two, increased sound barriers to address guest noise. Number three, lowered height of the indoor tennis court to 33 feet. And number four, no construction access off Waterman. Number one, I disagree that a bar is an acceptable use for an auxiliary or conditional building under zoning codes, and I also disagree that having a bar was part of the intent of this area when it was zoned as R1 residential. As what I hope is an acceptable compromise, I request that the bar and restaurant close at 8:00 p.m. to proactively prevent disruption in the neighborhood. The main clubhouse has a restaurant that members can use past 10:00 p.m. that's further away from the residential homes if they so choose. Number two, is 50% of the sound concern has been addressed via the sound engineer, but the other 50% is less predictable or controllable, and that's the sound of the members. During the planning commission last week, I mentioned that I heard a member on the tennis court drop the F-bomb from inside my house. To proactively address this, I'm requesting more trees and the 10- or 15-foot solid fence to be built between my property and the new parking lot. This is consistent with the development guidelines stating there shall be performance and buffering standards for intensive outdoor recreation. As of now, the neighborhood can hear all of the activity, and we need more screening or sound barriers as what is in place is not working as adequate screening. Number three, from the requirements provided by the ITF and ATP, two of the tennis governing bodies, a maximum height for recreational play is 33 feet. Tournament height requires 40 foot above the net, baseline, and backstop, all 40 feet. Since this is not being requested, my assumption is tournament play is not in the plans, and so I'm requesting a maximum height of 33 for the indoor tennis court, which allows for recreational and Davis Cup play. This is consistent with the ITF and ATP. Lastly, Interlocken has been approved for but has chosen not to upgrade their main entrance for three lanes, which would eliminate any need for Waterman for construction access. By upgrading the main entrance, which is already approved, they would eliminate the need to use Waterman. These may not be ideal or the perfect scenario for ICC, but none of this is convenient for the neighbors. My last comment is this. True neighbors know each other. We invite them over for a bonfire or drinks. To us, Interlocken is a stranger. The only time we hear from them, other than the constant noise of the tennis courts, is when something bad is about to happen. If Interlocken would like to be good neighbor, or Interlocken says they'd like to be good neighbors, but at the same time, we've got photos of ICC staff outside our window overlooking construction at 6:00 a.m., when construction crews are supposed to start at 7:00 a.m. Interlocken, please be a true neighbor and work with us. We've got young children and babies in our neighborhood. We've got individuals living on our own and grandparents who built their dream house in this neighborhood. We would be the quintessential neighborhood that everyone wants. So our door is always open, and compromising would be a good place to start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's go to any folks that might be tuning in online and see if they want to participate in this public hearing. We're going to keep this matter open until July 11th, so people can submit supplemental comments or original comments to us on or before June 11th. Here's the number if you want to testify in front of the council and not just submit something in writing, 888-504-7949. You see the conference ID number there at 450490. Press star one on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and Director Benarot will bring you in to talk to the council. Director Benarot, anybody online?
We do have someone online. Operator, will you please unmute the caller's line? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
The line is now open. Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Robert Frimerman at 6229 Maloney Avenue. Thank you for having this public hearing with us today. So, before I go through some of the comments that we've talked about with the neighborhood, I do want to set a couple things right on the record. Joel was correct. They are feverishly working on the parking lot, to the tune that even last night, we had to engage the Edina Police Department. Last night, after 7:00 p.m., the Interlocken Country Club continued their construction of the parking lot. We let it go till 8:00 p.m. and then kind of felt that was long enough. We contacted ICC. No one answered the phone. Contacted Health Services. They're closed. We did not want to have the Edina Police Department deal with this. They have more important things to do, but ICC refused to engage. At this point, the Police Department was engaged, and at 8:30, the work stopped, the day before the hearing. Blatant disregard, even to the rules coming up to this. Secondly, Joel was right. We've been trying to get feedback. Now, to set the record a little bit right, moving of the tennis court building wasn't exactly feedback from the neighborhood. Interlocken or ICC approached a neighbor to the north about purchasing their property and allowing them to lease it until they passed away. That neighbor denied that and refused to take that offer. Next, the building was moved from the property line to one foot over the minimum requirement. Not exactly feedback in the approach that we would have had to have them approach one of our older neighbors and try to buy their home, a home she built and she raised her family and then wants to stay in. So, we would, back to Berta's comment, we love better engagement than what we're getting here from ICC. Now, what I would say, four points back there. We agree that this is probably going to get approved. Joel's been very clear about that in all the meetings. This is a kind of a rubber stamp process. So I would say the hours are a big deal. Again, to Berta's point, they've got a main clubhouse. They can serve booze till 1:00 in the morning. There isn't a neighbor for thousands of feet at that building. 8:00, we think, is realistic, especially for outdoor serving. We'd be willing to compromise for indoor serving to go till maybe 10 or so, but we know it's going to spill over. We would ask that for a second restaurant and bar, that be limited. And for the big events and the big parties, they use their main clubhouse. That is our ask. Secondly, it's the fence. They talk about a solid fence. Our ask, though, is not on the property line. If you notice, the land for the drawing slopes down to the north and down to the west. Putting a fence on the bottom of that hill doesn't do anything. We can see and hear everything through it. We'd like the fence at tennis court height. We think that's fair. There needs to be a fence there anyways. We'd like it solid. Most online stats state that the fence should be 10 to 12 feet for tennis. We'd like a minimum of 15. We'd love the three extra feet. So we'd like the city to put a condition to say a minimum of 15 feet at grade of play, is our ask. Secondly, the construction of Waterman, sorry. Just to note for the record, even today, the gate has still not been installed. And while they've minimized traffic, primarily because of the Blake Road construction, Waterman continues to be used for construction for members, for employees. We see a constant flow of traffic. We'd like Waterman actually close with the gate and the conditions of the gate opening from the prior CUP actually be enforced, where the Fire Department has to be engaged, and all construction for this project goes through their entrance, not through our neighborhood. And with that, I rest. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frimerman. Thanks for calling in. Director Benarot, do we have anybody else in the queue?
I'm waiting for confirmation from my operator, but I don't think so. Just give me one second. No, sir. We have no more callers online.
All right. Mr. Livinggood, could you come back up? I think there may be some questions from council members. I've got a few here. Ms. Lamson was the first person to testify. Actually, yeah, and she had a couple of questions about, you know, the possibility of a 15, that's what she wanted, actually, a 15-foot, at least my understanding, 15-foot-high fence on the north and west edges of the property. Have you looked at that issue, or how does it?
We have not looked at a fence over 10 feet today. I guess, given where the property sits in the plan, the landscaping around it, I felt like the 10 feet would provide ample screening and is what exists today.
Okay. 9 feet is what it is today?
10 feet. It's 10 feet today, which is pretty standard for a tennis court, and I expect what you'd see at most tennis courts around town. I do think once the landscaping is installed around that fence, you'll see significant improvements in sound and over time, certainly, improvements in view. But at this point, we're just planning on a 10-foot, 10-foot fence.
All right. What do you expect with respect to the indoor building in terms of cutting down potentially on tennis noise, because that seems to be a concern in the neighborhood?
See, I mean, the indoor building would improve tennis noise, certainly, since now it's being played indoors. I think the biggest shift from, the biggest shift with the pickleball courts from the west to east, I think, improves sound significantly. I think, as I say, challenging to address some of the sound just associated with play, no different than the tennis courts down the street on Interlocken Boulevard or other places where folks are outside recreating. We've certainly, you know, we hold our members to high standards of conduct. If people are, you know, yelling or swearing or things like that, and that, you know, gets brought to our attention or we're aware of who that is, there's a process in place to address those things. We certainly have high expectations for how they'd conduct themselves out there, just as we would anywhere on property, though.
There was some discussion and some variation, I thought, on testimony about food and beverage service, including bar service. Some folks suggesting 8:00 is a closing time. Others suggesting, I think Ms. Lamson suggested, close the outside bar at 10:00 p.m. How does that compare to what you do now? And what about these suggestions? What are your thoughts?
Sure. So our liquor license allows service until 1:00 a.m. today. We close our restaurant at no later than midnight. So the way our hours of operation are written is, the restaurant closes at 10:00 p.m. unless somebody's present, then it'll stay open until 12:00 a.m. Frankly, that's not very common. I think we could certainly look at that a little bit further. 8:00 p.m., frankly, is pretty early. You think about just the summertime and all of us who enjoy things outside, you know, and into the evening. And I think even 10:00 p.m., sometimes this time of the year, we'll focus on the golf course until, you know, 10, 10:30, when it's as, you know, light out as it is this time of the year. And so, I think we could certainly explore that a little bit further, but we think our request at midnight, which is consistent with our hours of operation today, earlier than our liquor license allows, is acceptable. And again, we have high standards of conduct for our members. And I think we've got a great relationship with the Edina Police Department and team, and we certainly, it's not the type of place where there's loud late-night bar activity. The other thing I'd note on the site is we're dramatically shrinking the outdoor space that's available for a lot of those social activities. So today, we've got a 6,000-square-foot lawn that serves food and beverage, and it's a great example. There's going to probably be 300 people that eat outside over the course of the night, tonight. And this new concept here has 35 seats on the open patio. And so, we're shifting a lot of what happens outside, frankly, inside. Over the wintertime, members dine on that lawn in, you know, igloos, and they're in and out, and there's additional, you know, sound and things associated with that. And so, I actually think the plan addresses this in the opposite direction and now contains a lot of that activity indoors to where sound won't be an issue.
I was going to ask you about that. I thought I noticed that from the plans that there was a reduction in, really, in outdoor capacity.
Significantly.
By virtue of the plan. I think you just explained that. And then, folks, I think, have uniformly expressed a concern about, you know, where is the construction traffic going to be coming in? Are you going to let them into the new gate at Waterman, or are they going to come into main entrance?
Yeah, I think, obviously, with the shift in Waterman Avenue to achieve the space we need on the site, there's going to be a period of time where, you know, some access on Waterman is going to have to happen. I think, you know, consistent with some of the conversations during the parking lot planning process, there's, you know, things from time to time, like when we resurfaced our, you know, main parking lot earlier this year with other deliveries and activities, where we're going to have to continue to develop a good relationship with the folks on Waterman. And while nobody on Waterman spoke tonight, we've had a lot of conversation with those folks in recent weeks, as early as today, as the gate was being installed. And I think there's an opportunity for us to work closely with them to come up with a plan that works well. And as soon as we can shift traffic to the, back to that main entrance, we will, and our members will continue to use the main entrance. And so I think there's a reasonable path there to put a plan in place that works for, works for everybody.
And then what about the suggestion from Berta that you ought to be lowering the height of the tennis building to 33 feet from what's proposed?
I want to spend some time with our tennis professionals and understand what the impacts of that are. We spent quite a bit of time determining the height of the structure. It's just 39 feet at its peak, so it's got a pretty significantly sloped kind of A-frame roof structure, so it's only 39 feet above the net. So the net's 30 feet, and so, we're, you know, we're 36 feet above the center of the net and then down from there. So, I guess I'd want to, that's not my area of expertise, so I'd want to spend some time with our tennis team to understand, but we felt like 39, at least based on our conversations, was the minimum height to achieve what we needed to in there, given how the building was designed. Again, it's only 39 feet at its peak. Don't quote me. I believe it's closer to 20 feet on the baselines.
What would be the permissible height of a residence over there, Ms. Bodiker or Director Teague, on the ridge line?
The permitted height of a residence would be 40 feet, and that's based on the lot width, and that would be measured from average existing grade to the tallest point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did other council members pick up other issues that you wanted to address? Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first for you, Mr.?
Amber Jackson.
Thank you. Mr. Livinggood?
Yeah.
When we looked at the parking lot before, it was my understanding that the new parking lot was primarily for staff. Is that designated in its use, or how do you envision the members using the different lots?
It is, it's not designated in its use, but we're directing all of our staff to park in that lot. And, you know, a significant number of those team members arrive early in the morning time, and frankly, it's the furthest away from most of the activities on property. We were just joking today as members were circling. So our staff used to park in this lower parking lot here on the screen, and we have to coach them to go down that way. They're driving in circles in the main lot, and they don't see a spot and they don't know where to go. And so, we're certainly, we're directing all of our staff to that lot, and that's certainly its primary purpose, but we're not restricting access to it, per se.
So, it's probably most likely that people who are attending the new lodge would be parking closer to the main building as opposed to in that one, or it's, we just don't know?
I don't know. I think that's a fair assessment. They take the path of least resistance everywhere. So, if that is, that's going to be the closest path to that main door. I fully expect that that's where nearly all of our patrons will park.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question for you, Planner Bodiker. With the standard of review for conditional use permit, if we do nothing, I mean, I'm going to give you my understanding, and then you can clear me up.
Okay.
If we do nothing, it's automatically granted. And if we say no, we have to have, there are a couple of things like health and safety standards and things. Can you go through what the standards are for rejecting? Because I think it's unclear. It's not, we don't have total discretion here. We, it's a pretty limited window on our decision-making process.
It's outlined a little bit in your staff report, the different conditions of the review. I can pull that up here. So on the second page of the staff report, doesn't have an undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements, will not generate traffic within the capacity of, or will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets that serve the property, does not have an undue adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of other property within the vicinity, conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district in which it's located and is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. And when we looked at this before, we looked at that health and safety issue, if I remember correctly, and we found that it was within the standards of what we generally understand those conditions to be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make that clear because it's, it's not like a PUD where we can say yes, no, however we want it to be. There are some constraints on our decision-making process. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Other council members? Anything at this point in time? All right. Thank you, Ms. Bodiker, and thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Livinggood, and others as well. All right. With respect to this matter, is there a motion to close the public hearing on July 11, 2022, and continue the action on the conditional use permit request and variance request by Interlocken Country Club to July 19, 2022?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Members stunting seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Mayor.
And, Member Pierce, did you want to abstain?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next, so we'll keep that matter open, and now we've got the three in mind that we were hoping that we can act on this evening. So the first one is the potential issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license for the Mann Theaters, DBA Edina Theater. And I actually think the sign may have come down and been shipped off for some restoration work. It was due to come down. I don't know if that's happened yet or not, Ms. Bodiker.
Yes, it has.
All right, okay.
It came out today. Sorry to come that late.
All right, very good. Thank you for letting us know on the way out the door. All right. And Sharon Ellison has this matter, our city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mann Theaters applied for a liquor license. They're planning to reopen the Edina Theater, as you've mentioned before. The usual background check was done, and they were found to be in good standing. And they're also in compliance with our city code. And so I'm recommending that you approve the liquor license tonight. Mr. Mann, I was invited to attend. I'm not sure. Oh, there he is. And Stephen Mann is here tonight and would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, very good. Thank you, Clerk Ellison. Mr. Mann, you want to come up and give us an update on how you're coming on the remodeling? I tried to stick my head in there the other day, and you had so much HVAC equipment sitting around, the new piping and things in the lobby, I couldn't even get in there, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
And give us your name and address, please.
Stephen Mann. And the address, I guess, would be the theater, 3911 West 50th Street. The sign came down yesterday. We started at 9:30 in the morning, got done about 12:30. So it's off to the shop for about a six-week restoration process. And that didn't go quite as well as everybody had hoped, but we finally got it off the building. So that's the important thing. As far as the theater progress is concerned, that's not been going well either, mostly because of supply issues. You know, when we started this project, we had hoped to be open May 1. Then it went to June 1. Then it went to July. Now we're looking at probably September 1. Everything is in short supply right now. Freezers, refrigerators, tile, carpet, the list goes on and on and on. As far as the theater construction is concerned, we're about a million two over budget already. We ran into a lot of issues. This building was not taken good care of with the last tenant. A lot of electrical issues, heating issues, the list goes on and on and on. But I believe that when we're done with this project, it'll be the best theater in the Twin City area by far. The amenities that we're putting in, the finishes that we're doing, we're very, very proud of it. So as far as the bar is concerned, I think I mentioned it the last time I was here, the bar is being patterned after the movie out of The Shining. It's lipstick red. Excuse me, no. The restrooms are also patterned after The Shining. They're lipstick red. The bar is, you know, done in walnuts and in mahogany. And we spent a lot of time and energy on what we're doing there. And we'll be real proud of that as well. So our hope is to get this theater open on September 1. But right now, I can't even guarantee that. You know, there's been so many delays as we've gone through the process so far. So we'll do the best we can. We're, you know, missing our whole summer season, which is the best season for our industry. You know, you know what's out there right now. Everybody's heard about Top Gun. It's in the media every day, Jurassic World, and Minions is coming next week. And we're going to miss all those films, which is sad, but that's the way it is. So I can answer any questions. You know, we have three bars right now in other facilities, Plymouth, Champlin, and Andover. I'm proud to say that we have not had one issue in any of the three. You know, we run a real strict ship. We cart everyone. We have a two-drink maximum that they can order at the bar. And our bar hours are probably, we'll be shutting down 10:00, 10:30. The bar will not be open every day. You know, we're going to have to see based on attendance. So that's something that we'll get into as we get the operation going. So happy to answer any other questions.
I think we're all excited for the reopening of it. So questions from council members? Comments? I'm glad you were here this evening so that we could get that update. Sorry to hear about the cost overruns, but.
Yeah, it's just one of those things, you know. But, you know, we want to do it right. So we're not doing any cutbacks. And, you know, we'll see where we go from here. You know, our chairs have been manufactured. They're sitting down in Mexico right now. They should be here middle of July. Not that we're going to be ready for them, but we've got to take shipment out of them. So we're going to put them somewhere in there. All the floors have been redone so far. Screens are going in. Wall panels are, the new wall panels that we're putting in, they're under construction right now, too. So but there's a lot of work. Stop in, anybody, you know. We're open every day. Just come in the side door and, you know, feel free to ask for the superintendent, and he'll be happy to give you a tour.
Very good. Well, thanks for the attention to detail. I think it'll be important. It'll be well worth it.
Well, thank you.
I think it'll just be another factor in making 50th and France an ever more vibrant place, so.
Well, and when you see the sign go back up, which should be about six weeks, the rendition of the sign is beautiful. It's something that I'll be proud of, and so will the city.
Fantastic. Yeah. All right. We'll stand by in case there's any questions. I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony now. This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding the potential issuance of this liquor license to the Mann Theater operation for the Edina Theater? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, is there anyone online, Director Bennerott, that wishes to testify?
No, sir. We have no one at this time. Because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I'd recommend we wait a minute before moving on. My clock shows that it's 8:19. So I will come back to it 8:20 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor licenses for the Mann Theaters, Inc., DBA Edina Theater?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to approve the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor licenses for Mann Theaters, Inc., DBA the Edina Theater at 3911 West 50th Street in Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Mr. Mann, thanks for being with us tonight. And I will indeed stick my head in the side door someday and look around, ask for the superintendent.
Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, all right. Yeah, keep us posted. We'll want to have a grand event down there, I think, for the whole community.
Yeah. We just hope we get it in before the weather starts turning. That's all.
Yeah. Well, yeah, keep our fingers crossed with you.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon. And then Director Milner has the next matter, which is a request for a right-of-way easement vacation at 5621 Wycliffe Road. Director Milner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, there's a request this evening from the property owner, Mr. Gary Lee, at 5621 Wycliffe Avenue, embodied in Resolution 2022-58. And we're asking that you make your decision, your vote tonight on this motion or this resolution. Mr. Lee's been part of ongoing discussions for many years. During the process of applying for this vacation, we found there was two easements in his backyard. Five years ago, six years ago, in the street reconstruction program, we installed new pipes adjacent to his home down a side easement where we had rights, and he also has rights on the north. During that process, we went across his backyard, and he was happy to participate with our street reconstruction program. And there's a lift station right down in Hawks Lake that he takes it upon himself to clear out debris that gets into that lift station. And after he clears it out, he calls Public Works and we come and pick it up. So in an event to just get this done and over with soon, he applied in April, and we worked through these details. We asked that you just approve it tonight so he can potentially get on with a potential addition to his home. So one of the easements, you can see here, if you look at the alignment of the sanitary sewer pipe running here, you can see this is kind of the center of what we're going to talk about here for just a few slides. So one easement is offset to the west. The secondary easement is offset to the east towards the lake. We're asking tonight to vacate both those easements. And then we'll create a new one centered on that new, not a new pipe, but centered, a new sanitary easement centered on the existing sanitary sewer pipe. So then we have 10 feet on each side. And if we ever have to go in there, we can do that. We are having our Public Works crew currently televise that pipe to see if there's any issues there. And we would look at potentially lining that pipe if we saw issues prior to any addition that he would do on his home. So we feel we could vacate those two easements, create a new easement, and making it contingent on that new one. And then we'll file that paperwork to release that, those existing easements. We don't have any issues with it. The private utilities don't have any issues. We did open up the Better Together Edina webpage a few weeks ago to see if there's any comments. We sent postcards out, and there were no comments to this issue. So we would recommend you approve Resolution 20-22, or 2022-58, contingent on securing those new easements, but make that motion this evening. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions. And I do see Mr. Lee in the audience if you need to ask any questions of the applicant.
Yeah, thanks for that concise and helpful explanation. Questions for Director Milner? Don't appear to be any. Let me open this matter up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? It is a public hearing. Yes, sir. Come on forward. I suspect you're our fellow homeowner.
I am the homeowner. My name is Gary Lee, 5621 Wycliffe Road. So I do support this, obviously. I will say it is a little strange to me. I'm going through this process because the city has two sets of easements on my property for a pipe that's been there, one pipe that's been there for 60 years. So that is sort of strange to me, but I do support it. And I do wanted to, I wanted to come up here because I guess I want to say a few words about work to be done on my property and ask for the city's partnership in that. And I think we're starting to forge that, so that's good. As you can see by the pictures, it's a complicated lot. I'm not sure there are many more complicated lots in the city than mine. But it's beautiful. But we do have to endure the process that, you know, is required to have these kinds of easements. And I've always tried to be a good partner with the city. And I think Chad, Mr. Milner, alluded to that. I'm the one who asked Roger Glanzner a long time ago to look at the pipe on the north side of our lot because the sections were coming apart, and we realized it needed to be lined. I'm the one who notified the city that the pump wasn't working when it should, and led to discovery of a muskrat stuck in the inlet pipe, which then brimmed out the pumps. And the city's then replaced that. I am the one who pulls out locks, and they're heavy, let me tell you, and keeps the pipe inlet clean. So it's always able to work. And I'm also the one who suggested, when the road was being replaced in the neighborhood, that on the north side, or on the south side of our property, that they put, pull in a larger diameter pipe to be able to move more water out. And so I've tried to be a good partner. Recently, I've felt that, to this contractors and city, sometimes my property is nothing more than a utility. And the lake is nothing more than a sewer pipe. So after the city replaced the pipes in July 2015, I had quite a lot to do to put the yard back together. But more importantly, while the city said it would get a bigger capacity pipe connected and functioning, in about three years after the pipe was pulled, it's now been seven. So in that time, we had little communication about that. And I've heard now recently through Mr. Milner, when he came to tell me about the 100-year floodplain model, that I asked him about that, the pump system. And I guess we're now moving towards more of a smart system, an intelligent system to be able to pump on and off at when it should. And it seems to me that to be able to make use of the pipe's full capacity would only allow a smart system to be smarter. There are variable speed pumps. There are ways to manage this. And I understand there's downstream and upstream issues. I understand that. But I guess what I'm saying is we've done the work to put in that pipe. It's a bigger diameter pipe. What it needs now is a bigger pump and to be connected up. And I just asked the city to partner with me to get that taken care of, hold true to the plan that we put in place, and, you know, the promises that were made on that. So that's, I guess, the big thing. And then the second part about partnering with me on this is that there are beautiful red cedars that were planted, whatever, 50, 60 years ago, surrounding. And it's a beautiful little, and there's a garden there. And in 2015, just as that new pipe was being pulled in, that bigger pipe that I'm talking about connecting up, I was told by the Assistant City Engineer, Pat Race, at the time, if you remember him, on June 19, 2015, kind of to my dismay, he said the city'd have to come back to do this connecting up and putting the new pump in, which then meant that we're going to fill it in, then dig up the garden and all this stuff. And I was trying to get it one and done. And at that time, I, you know, there's nothing I could do. But Pat said to me, look, this could be done by hand spades. We don't have to bring in the big backhoe. It's only, I don't know, three feet or something like that, and it's not down that far. So I don't want to lose those cedars. And there's little disruption is possible when we're doing this. But, I mean, I do support this. I just want to partner with the city in the way that I know we can. So I ask your consideration in that.
Okay. So what are the key things that you'd like to have us do as a good partner with you?
Yep. So I still would like to see that bigger pump be put in to actually be able to utilize the bigger pipe capacity. I don't know if that's off the table. It's, they could still up for discussion, maybe. But I know there's talk of a smart system and maybe being able to pump out before a storm even comes, if the National Weather Service can give a forecast or something like that. But still, when you need it, and if it's a smart system, it can take, monitor flows and et cetera, we should be able to get a pump, I think, in there that could vary the speed, move it when it needs to. If it's looking like it's backing something up, slow it down. That's what a smart system, I think, would do. And then in the, the second thing is simply in the construction of that or in the implementation of that, at one point, you know, somebody said, well, we probably have to come in with a backhoe. And I'm like, oh.
You're thinking do that by hand?
I don't want to lose the cedars. I can move plants, but I don't want to lose the cedars.
Okay.
So.
And was it your thought that the, that the bigger pump was not only important, but should be a cost of the city?
Yeah, I mean, I do. I mean, that was the plan originally. I know there's been a changing of the guard since 2015, and Pat Race isn't there, and people have changed. But I, I guess I, it only makes sense to me, it's a benefit to have what, be able to use the capacity that you put in. And that was the original plan. So, you know, I don't know where that's gone since the changing of the guard. That's what I'm saying. When we first talked about it, they said it would take three years to figure out the downstream ponds. They were expanding them, et cetera. We don't want to make a problem for other people downstream. So I certainly don't want to do that. But I think the capacity being there and a smart system with a big pump that can pump more if it needs to and then slow it down if it, if it doesn't, I'm just thinking that that's a good part of the plan.
Okay, good. Yeah, thanks for those thoughts, Mr. Lee. Let's, let's see if we got anybody else who wants to testify. And then we'll have Director Milner stand by and answer those questions. So you can go ahead and sit down now if you want.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll see if anybody else wants to call in and testify. No, nobody else is calling. And Director Milner, you want to come up and give us your thoughts on this issue?
Yeah, since we implemented that, that street project in 2015, you were part of the flood risk reduction strategy. So we have a much better understanding of the flood shapes that were mentioned in our strategy for that. In the CIP, you're going to see later this year is a draft plan to look at a lot of these flooding areas and where we have stormwater lift stations. So that's what we're talking about, Mr. Lee, has a stormwater lift station for Hawks Lake down there, and it pumps into Bretton Park. So again, if we just pump more water today during rain events, we're going to impact people downstream. So part of the CIP, Ross Bittner put together a plan that, let's study these lakes and see if we can implement some of that smart technology that we're using at Morningside, or we're going to implement here in Morningside. So utilize our infrastructure better and smarter and see if we can do that. So that's the project I had mentioned to Mr. Lee, and we're going to look at here in the future.
So we'll be looking at that this fall?
No, that would be, in three years, we'd look at that study because we have other, other different priorities within our CIP to do that. So we still haven't implemented the first predictive pumping system yet. That's going to be installed this fall and winter with the Morningside project. So we still haven't even had one of those type of systems in place yet.
And so what are the pros and cons of his idea, adopting his idea and putting in a new pump now and doing it with handwork instead of backhoe?
Sure. Handwork, we could look at that. Handwork, we could look at that. The trees, we understand the trees are concerned. And then once we do that final connection of the pipe into the lift station, we can look at how to do that. Just putting a bigger pump in is not something we're comfortable doing because we're going to flood people downstream. So that's where we need to look at the big picture, look at the interconnectedness between these water bodies and really see what the right answer is. So we, our knowledge has changed a lot in the last seven years, so just putting a big pump in is not the answer here. We want to make sure we look at the big picture.
And we're going to hear more about your overall plan this fall.
Yes. In the CIP, there's a project in there and, and we might touch on it in the August work session at the Clean Water Strategy, and we're going to discuss some of the flooding stuff then, too.
All right, okay. Any other questions from council members? And we don't have anybody calling in. And Director Milner, you're still recommending that we move to approve this Resolution 2022-58, which would vacate the sanitary sewer right-of-way easement at Mr. Lee's property at 5621 White Cliff Avenue and do that this evening?
I do. They're two different, they're not connected issues. You know, this vacation is to do with a potential addition of his home. We don't want to hold that up. The stormwater and lift station discussion will continue on as we work through that.
And that resolution is contingent on securing a new sanitary sewer right-of-way easement from Mr. Lee and not hold, not hold it over?
Correct. We have that documents ready. I sent it to him, I think, last week, and we'll work on making sure that's signed and then we'll file that with our city attorney.
Someone on the council ready to make that resolution, approval of that resolution possible, 2022-58?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, second by Councilmember Pierce to approve Resolution 2022-58. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2022-58, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And then we've got one other public hearing matter this evening, and that's authorizing the sale of bonds for our Community Health and Safety Center, which we now call Fire Station Number Two. And Alicia McAndrews has this matter to introduce it, our finance director. And we've also got Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates, our public finance advisors here with us this evening. And I thought I saw Jay Lindgren around as well. Walk in anyway. Oh, there he is, out in the hallway. Okay, good. Mr. Anhut, welcome. Thanks for being with us.
Yes.
Director McAndrews, nice to have you here, too.
Nice to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So as you mentioned tonight, we have a public hearing on the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance Fire Station Two. Nick Anhut is the city's financial advisor with Ellers and Associates, and he's here to present on that financing mechanism and the process that it entails. And following the presentation, staff recommends that council approve Resolution 2022-56, which will then enable us to proceed with the purchase of the property for the fire station, which is also on the agenda later. So I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. Good to be here this evening. The city's bonding authority rests in the powers that are given under Chapter 475 of the state statutes. It allows cities to apply various forms of security to debt to finance particular projects. And one of those securities that I'm sure you all are familiar with is the city's general obligation pledge, otherwise known as a full faith and credit pledge, that you're going to use every financial ability to repay a bondholder or a lender for that debt. That pledge is the highest form of security that the city council and the city can offer on a financing and helps obtain the lowest cost financing available in the capital markets. The city's credit rating of a AAA rating is applied to your general obligation pledge, not to any other form of pledge. And so that is the highest form of credit rating that is available in the marketplace and translates to a low risk within the capital markets. Chapter 475 identifies that a city can authorize debt for projects as long as they are approved through a referendum process by the voters within the municipality, unless there is a specific exception identified with elsewhere within the statutes. And the topic for this evening's discussion is the process to authorize the council to have that authority to issue debt for certain types of projects. Section 521 of this, of that same chapter identifies general obligation capital improvement plan bonds. These are bonds that can be utilized to finance certain types of essential facilities within a city, so named as a city hall, a police or fire station, public works facility, and/or a library. These are bonds that can be repaid for up to a 30-year term from a dedicated property tax levy or other resources available to the community. Within that section of the statute, there is one limitation that is imposed, and that is that the levy that is utilized to repay the authorized debt, so debt for not just one bond, but any bond authorized under that section of the statute, cannot exceed 0.16% of the city's tax base or is your estimated market value. The city represents a $14 billion tax base, and so when we apply that percentage, that means that on an annual basis, under that limitation, you could potentially levy $22 million to service any debt so authorized under this provision. Doesn't mean you want to. That's the cap. The ability to authorize this kind of debt requires a public hearing process that we're here for this evening. It requires the council to consider a five-year capital improvement bonding plan. This is a supplement to the city's adopted capital improvement plan. It is, it is specific to only the projects identified and authorized under this section for debt. And it specifies the, the facility as well as the total amount of bond issuance authority granted to the city council. Upon completion of a public hearing, the council is able to adopt that plan and open up a 30-day petition process, otherwise referred to as a reverse referendum. This allows the public to potentially file a petition that can force the matter to be placed on a referendum. If that 30-day period closes without a valid petition, then the authority to incur that debt rests with the decision of the council on a future date. This particular five-year plan for this public hearing identifies only the Fire Station Number Two project that was identified as a need within a 2019 design study. It identifies that there is funding needed, potentially $39 million, to acquire the identified site at 4401 76th Street, as well as funding to design and construct the facility. So the total authorization that is being sought is up to $39 million. As far as the timing for this, the project site acquisition is expected to be underway this summer and the design and construction to be carried out over the course of potentially the next two years. As part of that document, that plan, we helped put together financial impacts for financing the various components of this project. We're anticipating a temporary bond issue this year with a short-term maturity similar to a construction loan to allow for the acquisition of the site, allow staff as well as the council and the public to engage in the design process and procurement steps necessary to construct the facility, and then plan to take out that temporary financing within the next two-to-three year timeframe and wrap that into a permanent financing for up to $39 million to finance the facility. I will also say that this would be the cap on the bonding authority under this public hearing. That does not mean that the council is obligated to issue that full amount. We do anticipate seeking other types of funding sources to help offset that debt amount, but the proceedings this evening are to authorize up to $39 million for this particular facility. As far as the other financial impacts, we anticipate that after the procurement and design is underway and the permanent financing is put in place, we would need to adopt a levy potentially as early as, for collection in the year 2025. And we could potentially structure that repayment over the course of the next 30 years, but that is not decided under these proceedings. We anticipate working with staff, finalizing and fine tuning the actual amount necessary for that financing, and then coming up with a recommended debt structure that fits within your other budget priorities. For an event that's held later on in this evening's agenda, there is a bond sale that I will present on. As part of that process, we did have discussions with Moody's Investor Service and Standard Empors. They do ask about future debt plans within those conversations, and so this was actually disclosed as part of that conversation. So they are aware that this is potentially coming down the road, as well as some other debt needs of the community, and they have already included that within their analysis. And so I'm happy to say, maybe it's leading you on to the next agenda item, but your AAA ratings were affirmed as a part of that process, and they did identify that while they do believe that the future debt plans will degrade that portion of their scoring criteria, it has no immediate impact on the overall credit quality of the city and your general obligation pledge. And so they did not see the need to take any action anticipating those plans. So subject to the public hearing, there is a resolution in front of the council to adopt the capital improvement plan and authorize the issuance and sales of bonds therefore. This would give the authority potentially to the city council to issue up to $39 million in the future specifically for the Fire Station Number Two project. By taking action this evening, it will start that 30-day petition period, which would potentially expire on July 21st. And we anticipate following up at the next subsequent council meeting with a competitive sale to temporarily finance the site acquisition in an amount of up to $17 million, and then start the process to begin the design and construction of that facility with the permanent financing to be determined over the course of the next two to three years. Happy to stand for any questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Anhut, for that thorough presentation. Questions from council members? At this point in time? All right. There is a proposed motion regarding this matter in Resolution 2022-56. But you had three elements on that slide 10, and I'm just wondering if you believe that the resolution as proposed adequately covers those three key elements that you mentioned in what you thought would be the appropriate council action?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That is, these are the three steps that are embodied within that resolution.
The resolution covers all three of the elements. Okay, thank you for that.
This is a, it is a public hearing.
Right. I'm going to go there next. Let folks know this is a public hearing matter. If there's, I don't see anybody in the audience at City Hall here that proposes to testify, unless the fire chief wants to come and testify. He's up, coming up soon here. Director Benarot, do we have anybody online that wishes to testify regarding this matter?
No, sir.
All right. All right. We've got a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-56, which would approve the capital improvement plan and authorize the sale of bonds for the Community Health and Safety Center, which we call Fire Station Number Two now. And there's some immediacy to this because of the rising interest rate environment, so we'd like to get this moving. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-56?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce, that we adopt Resolution 2022-56, which would approve the capital improvement plan and the sale of bonds for the Community Health and Safety Center. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. All right, very good. Step one, we're here, off, off and running. Now we're going to move on to reports, and that concludes our public hearing matters this evening. And we're going to move on now to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And the first matter we have there is the approval of the 2022-23 student commission appointments. And we had councilmembers Anderson and Jackson work on interviewing these students, and I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Manager Lisa Schaefer and then on to Councilmember Jackson to provide us with those student recommendations. So Assistant City Manager Schaefer, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. We had 38 applicants this year for student commissioners. And as you said, Councilmember Jackson and Anderson interviewed all of the candidates along with Jan Seidman, who is a community volunteer. We typically, in the past, at least several processes, have included a community volunteer or someone who was a current or previous commission member from any of the city's 10 commissions. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Jackson, thanks for doing this.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Really appreciate you interviewing those 38 folks.
Yep. Well, I didn't interview all 38. We kind of split it up, so the first set of interviews were Ron, Member Anderson, and Jan Seidman, and then I did the second two. And as always, it was just a delight. I love hearing from these kids and they're, we could have chosen all of them. And so it is with great, I will read the names and I want to give just a couple of comments about the overall process, but I'm so excited. I got to read them right away. And so for our Arts and Culture Commission, we have Ria Anand and Nikhil Konkimala. For the Community Health Commission, we are naming Jay Shapiro and Ben Hikes. For the Energy and Environment Commission, Surya Ashrawat and Ella Mashard. For the History, Heritage Preservation Commission, Ashwan Mahashwari and Sanjana Veradan. And for the Human Rights and Relations Commission, Dia Chatal Jane and Liliana Alualia. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have William Horseger and Andrew Defore. For the Planning Commission, Sarah Hu and Cheyenne Gandhi. And for the Transportation Commission, Stephen Conti Mahanti and Isaiah Sweeney. So these are all juniors and seniors. And one of the interesting things about these interviews was whether they were interviewing for the Community Health Commission or one of the other commissions, they were all interested in the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic had had on our community. And they were very interested in learning what we can do to address the mental health aspects of it and the community health. And it was just super reassuring to hear from these students about how they want to heal our community. And I was very moved by that. Like I said, every single one of them we interviewed would have been great, and it was very hard to choose, but I'm very pleased to present this slate to the city council.
All right, very good. In addition to presenting the slate, would you care to move the approval of those student commissioners that you named with a term starting September 1st, 2022 and ending September 1st, 2023?
Yes, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, to approve the student commissioner slate that Member Jackson identified with a term starting 9/122 and ending 9/123. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, approval of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. All right, now we're on to Resolution 2022-59, which accepts various donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Is there a motion with respect to Resolution 2022-59 to accept those donations?
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton moves, Member Pierce seconds. The approval of Resolution 2022-59, which would accept donations made to the city of Edina from various residents? Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-59, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We'd like to tell folks in the audience broadly who is making these donations. And here we have a neighborhood association, the Edina Highlands Neighborhood donated $350 for trees at Highlands Park. Joan Kiefer, another tree donation, a $300 donation. Thank you, Joan, or it's actually Joanne Kiefer. And then Cassandra Mahalchik, $150 for the Edina Senior Center. And then Betty Jean K. Anderson to the Fire Department, a general use donation of $150. Thanks to all those donors, and your names will be on the city website. And next matter in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda is the potential approval of the tax increment financing redevelopment agreements for 7001 France Avenue. And our Economic Development Manager, Bill Noonendorf, has this for us. And then Jay Lindgren and Alex Selke from Dorsey &amp; Whitney and Nick Anhut are here for questions, and developers got some representation here as well. And I think we've got Dan Lesser from Mortenson and Ted Carlson from Orion Investments with us. Good evening, gentlemen.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Bill Noonendorf, the city's Economic Development Manager. So the proposal in front of you tonight is regarding two tax increment financing redevelopment agreements for the project at 7001 France. In your packet, there are extensive materials. There's a relatively brief
There's a relatively brief staff memo. There's this PowerPoint presentation. And then there's the two full redevelopment agreements in there. So tonight, we do have our full team available, both the city's representation as well as the developers. I'll run through the presentation relatively briefly. I'm not going to touch on every slide. But just know that we're here to answer any questions that you might have before you make your final determination on these agreements. Let's see. How does that? Have the wrong clicker. There we go. So in summary, this is the project at 7001 France. We've been working, staff has been working with the developers in conversation for more than a year and a half as this project has really pushed its way through the pandemic and weathered a lot of the hurdles that we see in the construction industry. We, the city, engaged Ellers Associates, as well as Dorsey &amp; Whitney, to help us in our analysis and our strategy on this project. Ellers did confirm that the project does have a $22 million budget gap. And that gap does hinder this project from moving forward and getting financed, at least in this scale and this level of quality. So for the last several months, we worked and prepared a term sheet by which we might supplement the massive private investment with some limited public investment. And that term sheet was presented to the HRA back in February. In March, this body, the city council, established the 7001 France TIF district, anticipating that eventually we would have the redevelopment agreements that would actually bind the project to the site. And that's what we have for you tonight. As with my previous conversations and recommendations, staff certainly does recommend that we move forward with both of these agreements. The developers on this are almost a tag team. It's being led by Mortenson Development. Brent Webb has been the lead on this. He's been assisted by Nate Podraths, as well as Dan Lesser. And Ted Carlson with Orion Investments has also been a major leader on this project. And both folks have been integral to these conversations. And we'll be seeing more of them as these developments move forward. The key aspect of the site is taking a large six-acre parcel and subdividing it into four smaller parcels. That really abides by the goals of the Southdale Design Guidelines, to create a more walkable, a more permeable type of environment, and to organize the parking in a different manner than just giant surface parking lots. This also creates a new street grid that in the future could be extended, with the intention that eventually, as more parcels change over the decades, we would have options other than France Avenue. So if you want to, if you're at this location and want to go across a street, you might be able to walk there. Or you might be able to take a side street and not clog up France Avenue. So that's really one of the transformational characters of this whole project. We've seen the renderings that illustrate the site. We've talked about the public benefits before as well. In addition to the Southdale Design Guidelines, this project would also be the first to work through that new sustainability policy that the city adopted a few months ago. I think most importantly, though, this is the first new multi-tenant speculative office building in Edina for more than 20 years. And that's an important distinction. The office environment certainly has changed over the last 20-some years. It's changed over the last two years as well. But having a new office building is intended to attract new businesses, new tenants, and new jobs. And that's something that is certainly in the city's best interest. Along with the street grid that we've mentioned here, there's also the structured parking. The developer is willing to provide a public easement, to let the public use portions of that property at most times of the day, and then more of it at limited times of the day. That's been a lot of our conversations over the last six months or over the last several months. And of course, there's new public plazas that don't exist today. So spaces for people to not just walk or ride their bikes, but to sit and recreate and relax and enjoy themselves. A lot of this project, though, has contributions to the overall economy of Edina. This overall private investment is more than $250 million. That's a very large development for this site. The growth in the tax base, it increases by about a factor of 12. It's a pretty massive change to our local tax base. A project of this scale also pays millions of dollars in park dedication fees that the city can use in our parks program, as well as several million dollars to the Housing Trust Fund to support the next affordable project that we might find. The project will be built in two phases. And at a recent HRA meeting, I did alert you to this. And that's why we have two agreements tonight. Rather than one master agreement, we have two separate ones that could stand alone potentially, but they're intended to work together. The first phase would be preparing the site, creating the pads that the future buildings would be constructed on, preparing the new public streets, sidewalks, et cetera, and then moving forward with that residential building. The second, or actually, the cost of that first phase was out of order here for a moment, is about $139 million. So that project would be privately financed upfront. And then upon completion, a tax increment financing note would be issued in the amount up to $5 million. We would actually balance that actual number when the project is finished. But for time, for these purposes, we should assume it's about $5 million. And at that level of investment, without TIF, the project just doesn't satisfy the returns of the private sector. So the intention of TIF is to get it over that hurdle so that it can actually be financed. The second phase is the office portion. And certainly, the structured parking goes along with the office. The timeframe for that, we've extended, we've pushed it out one year. So ideally, things might start in 2023. That's where we're aiming. But just with the uncertainty of the supply chain, we heard a little about that from the Mann Theater Group tonight. The supply chain is still out of scale and a little bit unpredictable. So we extended the time period here potentially up to one more year. The second phase, the office, is about $115 million investment. And that includes the land, the construction costs, the tenant buildout, the architectural fees, the financing fees, et cetera. We've also included contingency funds in the budget. That's something that staff and the developer certainly agreed on, that in these times of uncertain costs, we should plan for more uncertainty. So there's a higher contingency fund than you would normally expect. But we think that's a good thing. But the bottom line is the same for Phase Two, that without TIF, it doesn't pass the threshold where it would be privately financed. And our intention is to see this full project built out, whether it happens in 2023 or 2026. That's our intention. A project of this scale certainly has lots of eligible costs when it comes to tax increment financing. In Edina, we are not as liberal as the state law allows for tax increment financing. According to the state statutes, there could be $50 million in eligible costs. But that's not how we look at it in Edina. So here we see about $22 million. And that would primarily help defray the costs of all that site prep of the new public streets, the demolition of the existing buildings. But the most expensive things are those parking structures. So that's the majority of what would be funded with those tax increment funds. Of course, there's some things that tax increment just will not be used for. The private parking for the residential building, it will not be used for that. It will not be used for the private parking in the office building, nor the cost of those private elements. We really want to focus the use of TIF on those public elements. So the biggest part of the story here continues to be the same. And that is, even with the potential use of TIF on this, the developer bears the burden. So for this project, the developer bears all financial risk. It's their responsibility to secure debt and equity on the project. It's their responsibility to pursue grants. Hopefully, we'll get some more grants. We've got one already, and hopefully, we'll get a second or third here. And it's their responsibility to weather through the construction costs and these contingencies as we move forward. Upon successful completion, however, that's where tax increment could be applied. And in that case, the city of Edina uses pay-as-you-go TIF notes, which means when they finish, we would give them a note or an obligation that we would then pay off over the next 15 years. If the project performs as we expect it will, we'll be able to pay those TIF notes off. If it underperforms, if it doesn't do as well as we think it will, that's the developer's risk, not the city of Edina taxpayers, but that's the developer's risk. And so when we use tax increment, we really try to keep the risk burden on the development side of the table rather than the public side. Of course, we have lots of clawbacks and contingencies. So when things sell, we want to make sure that we can take a look at the developers' sales in the future and make sure that they've not been oversubsidized or that we've used TIF too much. So we have a separate set of lookbacks and clawbacks in case there is an excessive profit. We would scale down the repayment of those TIF funds. Want to make sure we use those monies responsibly. But the biggest story, again, with this project is really delivering that public benefit. So subdividing the super block, providing additional public realm experiences that are recommended in the design guidelines for Southdale. But they don't create more revenue. They just create more cost. But it's an experience that collectively, the city has said we want to pursue, and we can use tax increment financing to help make that happen. The development is also going to include LEED and Energy Star certified buildings. It will include the EV chargers in our policies, solar panels on the parking garage, and then the public parking that we've talked about quite a bit over the last several months. But there will be parking available to the general public in both phases of the project, in both the residential phase as well as the office phase. There would be reasonable rules so that you can't leave a car there for a month and go to the airport and go on a vacation. There will be some reasonable rules to using those public spaces. But the public would be able to use the parking areas for free at no cost forever. We've also negotiated, if at any point in the future we don't need all the parking stalls, that driving habits have changed so much, we don't need a whole separate parking structure, the city has the right to purchase that property for a dollar. And then we can use it as is needed in 30, 40, 50 years. So that's something that is really unique to this project. But we wanted to make sure that the public sees that benefit. And there's been so much conversation about parking. Do we need parking today? Do we need it tomorrow? Do we need it in 50 years? Just in case we don't need parking, we want to make sure that the public benefits from this project. Mortenson has also been quite a leader in advancing diversity and equity goals. So for this project, they've made the commitment to pursue a pretty strong percentage of minority subcontracting firms, as well as direct employment of people of color and women, two groups that are typically underrepresented in the construction field. So this is the first project where a developer, first project in Edina, where a developer has been willing to put numerical goals, as well as a plan, as well as staff, in place to help achieve those goals. So in summary, there's a lot of detail that's in the agreement. Happy to answer any questions. But of course, we do recommend approval of both of these redevelopment agreements. The city council approval this evening is the first of two. We'll also present the same subject to the HRA in about a week. And that's the final approval that would then be needed. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you. And our full team is here to answer any questions.
Very well done. Very well done. Thank you, Manager Noonendorf. Questions from council members or comments? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, part of your presentation that went pretty quickly was about the artwork, the public artwork. I hope that we can engage the Arts Commission, Arts and Cultures Commission on that. They are a really talented group, and I'd love to have their input since this is public money that's going into that. And the second thing is just a very general comment. And I know this project is using LEED certification. But in our building policy, there's also the option of B3, which is a Minnesota-centric green building code. And so I just wanted to highlight that for future developments, that that's an option as well. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had just one follow-up question. A few months back, when we talked about the two phases and the total of the $22 million, we also talked about, and you alluded to this a little bit, trying to reduce that number as much as we could. And we talked about grants. And at the time, I think we had only applied for one, if I remember. And so you mentioned that we've applied for two. And so I'd like to just understand what we think the total might be. And then if those grants are received and we move forward, creating the $22 million in total, how do those grants get applied to reduce the TIF note? And you can do it in total. You don't need to do the two phases.
Sure. Good question. So with grants, there's always a certain uncertainty. We might apply for $1 million in grants, and maybe they award $700,000. So you never know until you actually get that final agreement. But so far, we've secured one grant from Minnesota DEED, the Department of Economic Development and Employment, for $650,000. So that's one that we know we've, in fact, you just approved and signed off on it earlier tonight. The second grant we applied for is with Hennepin County. That was a lower amount, $200,000 or $300,000. We don't know if we'll receive all of that, part of it, or none of it. This fall, we expect to apply to the Met Council, LCDA Livable Communities Program. We plan to request over $1 million to help support a lot of the public realm improvements. That's one of the goals of that program. So in about a year, hopefully by January of next year, we'll know how many grant funds we've actually received. And then how we account for that in the project is upon the completion of the project, we'll look at the total expenses. We'll look at the total revenue, including grants, whether it's $650,000 or $2 million. And then we just balance out the numbers at that point. If there is, if there's a high amount of grants, like this $1 million if we apply for the Met Council, we'd probably reduce, well, we would reduce both TIF notes to some degree. But we want to be careful that we don't double pay, so to speak. Like if one grant pays for an expense, we don't want to use TIF to pay for the same thing twice. But the way we do the math is at the end of the day, when the project is actually finished, we know what the real expenses were, and we know what the real revenues were. Then we balance it.
Thank you. I just want to comment that I think you, from a staff standpoint, and our team, and the development team, I mean, this has been really complicated stuff. It's a big, big project, quarter of a billion dollars. And it's got all kinds of complexity. And here are you and Mr. Lindgren and Mr. Selke and Mr. Anhut on our team, and the Orion team, and the Mortenson team, all those members. I know it's been complicated at times and frustrating. But you guys have figured out how to problem solve your way through all of these issues to get us to the one yard line, really. I mean, you took us from a place where we came with a new PUD ordinance proposed to guide development that was consistent with the Greater Southdale Design Experience Guidelines. And here we are, almost there. So I'll ask my fellow council members, is there a council member who would make the motion to approve the tax increment financing redevelopment agreements for sites A, B, and C located at 7001 France Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Jackson, to approve the tax increment financing redevelopment agreements for sites A, B, and C located at 7001 France Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Yep. Can't thank everybody enough for this very, very good work. Really, high, high-quality work. Thanks for everybody. All right. Now we're going to move on to the matter involving 4401 West 76th Street. And that is, of course, the address for the new Fire Station is, of course, the address for the new fire station number two, Community Health and Safety Center. And Manager Newendorf has this matter as well, and this is actually to approve the purchase of land at that location.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is that purchase agreement for that property. So this relates to the public hearing you held earlier about financing for this project. I don't have a formal presentation. The staff report is in your packet as well as the purchase agreement. And joining us online in case you have any questions, we do have Dave Perkins and Mike Carlson there with Sterling Properties, the sellers. They've owned this property for several years. They're with us in case you have any questions for them. But in short, back in 2018, the city engaged the Five Bugles Group to discuss our future response time, our emergency response time. We've talked about the recommendations they have made there to expand and improve Fire Station Number Two, and then to pursue a new Fire Station Number Three at some point in the future. So this first proposal tonight is to move forward with that. We're proposing that Fire Station Number Two be relocated away from its location on York Avenue, to be a little bit more centrally located, closer to France and closer to 76, which gives us good east-west and north-south access. And this is something we've been working on for several years. Much of it happened during the pandemic, so it was, work from home is where a lot of it happened in those conversations. But for more than two years, we've been looking for a site that's between two to four acres, large enough to accommodate the current need and make sure we've got some potential room for growth if we ever need it. We considered over 30 sites. This was not a rush decision. We've looked at lots of different sites over the years. Some were quickly dismissed, they were in a good location, but they just didn't have good access. Others were great access but at the wrong location, or too small, or not available. So over a period of about a year and a half, we reduced the list down to three finalists, which we discussed back in May. Chief Slama gave you that presentation, I think on May 4th. And based on additional input that we received after going out to the broader community and getting their input, this site was selected as the preferred site. Earlier this fall, we did prepare a letter of intent with the owners of the property. The site has been vacant for a couple of years as the last tenant moved out to a newer location, and it's been available for lease and for sale. So that's one of the reasons we looked at this one. But after the site was selected as the preferred site, we translated the letter of intent into the purchase agreement that's in front of you tonight. Attorney Dave Kendall and his staff did a great job making that translation, and it's a fairly straightforward contract, not nearly as complicated as the last transaction we just talked about. But this, again, is the first step. We want to get the site under contract, move towards closing. We've had questions about what does the new building look like? How big is it? Which side does it face? We don't have any of those answers at this point in time. We do know that the site is currently zoned industrial, so we think we'll probably have to rezone the site. I think this is also an opportunity to apply those design guidelines from the Greater Southdale District and redo the grid, and it's a large site, so we've got room to do some interesting things in addition to the fire station. But we wanted to wait until we actually have the funds and your approval before we begin any of that design work. But we did also meet with our planning commission last week and share this location with them, and they passed a resolution to confirm that the purchase of this site would be in conformance with the land use goals of our comprehensive plan. So we made sure that we engaged them. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you. We certainly recommend that this purchase agreement be approved.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Manager Newendorf? Or we have our chief, Andrew Slama, with us as well this evening, our fire chief. Questions from council members for either of those gentlemen? All right. Yeah, we've all been working on this for quite some time, but really appreciate that thorough backgrounding, and we've got a lot of broad support from the community as well, I think, especially Pointe de France. You know, they might even want to pay for the whole thing over there. That's a joke. Pointe de France people listening, this is going to benefit the entire city. So is there a motion to approve the purchase agreement of land at 4401 West 76th Street for the Community Health and Safety Center, which will be the new Fire Station Number Two? Member Jackson?
So moved.
Second.
Member Pierce, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion to approve the purchase agreement for land at 4401 West 76th Street for the purposes described, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Any comments, following comments from any council members on this? It's really, it's pretty exciting. Got a lot of great work done tonight. And then we've got Nick Anhut back with us and Alicia McAndrews, our finance director. Every year, of course, we have street reconstruction projects, and we borrow money at the city to take care of getting those street reconstruction projects done, and then that gets specially assessed back to the owners of those properties. And then we're also in that transition phase of making it more of a general fund expense. So it's gotten a little bit more complicated over time, but we're here tonight to discuss the awarding of the sale of almost $30 million for the general obligation bonds, Series 2022A. And Director McAndrews, I'll let you lead it out, and then I think Nick Anhut wants to report out for us too on who thought those bonds were attractive.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Director McAndrews.
Council members, yes, as you said, we are here today asking for your approval on the bond sale to fund the street reconstruction and utility projects. I think maybe I was a little nervous going into it just with the actions of the Fed last week, but Nick has great results to present to you, and I think the market's looked very favorably on the bonds, and so I will hand it over to him to speak to the results.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The bonds that were authorized were $29 million worth of funding for various infrastructure projects that are being undertaken this year and next, notably the Blake Road Reconstruction, Morningside Reconstruction, and utility improvements, the stormwater and water utility components of those projects. These bonds are broken apart into different portions, authorized under various statutes, and repaid under separate revenue sources, anticipating repayment from the assessments, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, for the street improvement portions, municipal state aid funding that the city is allotted each year for a significant portion of the Blake Road project, and then using utility revenues, the charges that you impose on your utility customers throughout the city to repay the stormwater and water improvement portions of that debt. And these bonds will also carry the general obligation pledge of the city as a whole as additional security beyond those revenue sources, but we did not anticipate any levy being necessary to supplement any of those sources. I'm happy to say, as I mentioned earlier in the public hearing, that your credit rating was affirmed at the AAA level for this bond issuance, so we did have a discussion with both Moody's Investors Service and Standard Empors, who carry active ratings on your existing debt, and they saw fit to apply those ratings to this offering as well. You've maintained AAA rating from Moody's since the year 2000, congratulations. And then S&amp;P took them a little bit longer to get up to speed, but 2003, and you've carried them very well throughout this period. As part of those conversations, staff leads the discussions, and I participate, and we talk about a variety of different aspects of the financial health of the community, both in terms of your tax base, local employment, economic factors, as well as foreshadowing future budgetary and capital plans that the city anticipates undertaking. And after those discussions and their analysis and presentations to their national committees, they saw fit to affirm that the City of Adina maintains the highest bond rating or credit rating that they offer to any municipality as well as any type of security that is evaluated. This applies to thousands of different cities and counties across the country, and so congratulations again. Moody's report identified both the strong management inherent at the city, starts with the council as well as your staff, but then also maintaining a robust financial profile with key strengths being the size of your $14 billion tax base, as well as its trend in growth, new investment that's taking place within the community, to continue to grow that tax base and provide additional security for any kind of debt that is issued and evaluated. They also noted a very strong historical trend in financial performance and maintaining your reserve levels, which you adopt through policy and maintain year to year, ensuring that you're budgeting appropriately even in a downturn or a pandemic, keeping those reserves in line so that you can weather a rainy day in the future. The one credit challenge that they do identify, that we also had talked about in the last, in the public hearing, is they did identify that the city is maintaining an elevated leverage or fixed cost position, which basically means your debt liabilities combined with, specifically Moody's dives fairly deep into your pension liabilities. Now, those pension funds you contribute towards, and they're administered at the state level, but they apply a portion of that liability to the city and evaluate it as part of this credit profile. But neither of those things pose any risk of a downgrade, they just merely note those as a challenge as you move forward and consider planning in the future. Much of the same from Standard Empors. Again, they see the city's credit is very stable, independently strong local economy among a very strong metropolitan economy, a very diverse tax base, meaning that you're not overrepresented by one, you know, large industry, but rather a wide array of different property taxpayers, stable operations, knowledgeable management team received a shout-out, and then very strong reserves and liquidity as well. They did revise what they called a strong debt burden in the last evaluation, down to an adequate, that's a one step down, as I mentioned in the public hearings, viewing you relative to your other AAA peers, they saw the need to degrade that score, but it did not impact the overall credit quality of the city or your AAA rating, and they specifically called that out in the report, again, not identifying that any of the particular projects that we discussed would cause a challenge to your AAA status by themselves. So with that result, we released an offering document on behalf of the city, and we collected competitive bids this morning. When we received 11 bids, which I think is the most that I've been doing this with the city for about 10 years now, and that's the most that we've ever received. It's noted that, you know, during times of stress, that there's typically a flight to quality, and certainly that AAA rating in the City of Adina in your name and prominence is reflected here, that we did attract bids from across the country. Just about every name of any kind of broker-dealer firm that does bid on these types of transactions did participate in the sale. Fifth Third Securities out of Cincinnati was the winning bidder at an indicated rate of 3.28%, or just a hair above that. And I'll note that among all 11 bids, the difference between the high and the low is only .15 percentage points among all of them. So an indication that there is not only, well, consensus, I guess, amongst the marketplace that this is the appropriate bond yield that an investor would warrant or need in order to engage in this transaction. We'll certainly take the low one from Fifth Third, does represent about an $80,000 difference in the total interest costs from the high to the low bid, but as you'll see, Morgan Stanley, the cover bid was just .01 percentage points higher in their bid. But you've got a variety of different names, including Piper Sandler here in Minneapolis, but all of the major players in New York, as well as even, you know, Citibank, whose office is out on the West Coast. So with the results and the winning bid, there is a resolution provided. It has been revised by your bond attorneys at Dorsey and Whitney to incorporate the terms from the winning proposal, the lowest-cost proposal. They did include a $3.5 million premium within their bid that allows us to reduce the principal amount of bonds that you'll have outstanding. So the final principal amount in that revised resolution is $26,305,000. That will still deliver the funding necessary for the projects, but we're just able to do it at a lower principal balance outstanding. You'll pay that premium back in the form of the interest cost over time, but they're providing that upfront to the city. And again, it delivers the full $29 million worth of funding that we anticipated as needed for the variety of projects that I disclosed. When we plugged in all the rates, we leveled out the terms of the financing so that the repayment streams would be level and supported by the various funds. The final calculated true interest cost for the entire, about 18-year repayment timeframe for the entire bond is about 3.31%, certainly higher than some of the rates that we saw over the course of the last two years during the pandemic, but much lower than we had actually anticipated, given the rising rates that we've seen so far this year. It was a very good sale result, and we certainly recommend that the council move forward. You know, over the last 10 years, we would not sneeze at a 3.31%. Typically expect something like this to price in the 3.5% range historically. So still a very good result, albeit a little bit higher than we've been used to the last two years.
Good to have that historic perspective. Thank you for that.
So with all that said, there is a revised resolution presented to the council to finalize the sale, authorize the issuance, and lock in the terms from Fifth Third Securities and the proposal that they provided. We anticipate closing on this financing July 4th, and that's when the funds will be wired into the city's accounts to start making payments and reimburse some payments for the projects that are underway. Happy to stand for questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Anhut. Questions for Mr. Anhut? Comments? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-57, which awards the sale of $26,305,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2022A?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by a member Sutton, second by a member Jackson, to approve Resolution 2022-57, which would award the sale of $26,305,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2022A, to take care of the infrastructure matters that were described by Mr. Anhut. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passage of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. All right. Thanks, Mr. Anhut, for being with us. It is a higher rate than we've been seeing, but we know the Fed has been adjusting those rates upwards, so getting that, as I said, that historical perspective that we've been around 3.5 is good to have, too. We're still under that market and maintaining that good credit rating. All right, we are on now to any commission correspondence. I don't think, well, I don't think, we've seen that in the packet, but managers' comments.
Very quick comments. As is customary, we will not be having a council meeting, the first meeting in July, which would have been on July 5th. No council meeting July 5th. So the next council meeting will be on Tuesday, July 19th. We will still be having the HRA as regularly scheduled next week.
HRA as regularly scheduled? Okay, all right.
Council meeting for July 5th is canceled. All other meetings remain the same.
So next, that's a week from this coming Thursday. What is that, the 29th, or what's the date for that? 23rd, 20, 30th?
30th is an HRA meeting.
22, 29th?
29th.
29.
The next HRA meeting is June 30th.
Okay.
And then the 21st of July.
Right. Okay, thank you. Council comments? Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, just listening to this presentation on the bonds, I just have to crow a little bit. I'm so proud of our management team and just the overall stability and leadership of the city. It fits really nicely with the student commissioners. I just think I'm continually amazed at how many really talented people we have in this city and how dedicated our citizens are to good governance. And I think that's reflected in past city councils, in our management team that we have here, and it's just, I'm always so proud of my city. And I was proud of them on Sunday for the Juneteenth celebration. I really enjoyed that. It was a little warm, but it was, there was a nice crowd of people coming and going, and I really enjoyed it, and I want to say thank you to the team to put that on. So those are my comments.
Good, thank you. Member Sutton?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Member Pierce? Anything to report from across the pond?
Just happy to be back, back in the USA. Nothing else for me. Thanks.
All right. Say, one of the things that I got a piece of correspondence on, I wanted to ask all of you about, was the Deputy Counsel General to the U.S. from Israel, Deputy Counsel General Ashheim, is planning to visit Minnesota and the Twin Cities coming up from Chicago on July 5th and 6th. Well, of course, wanted to know if he could have a roundtable discussion with the Edina City Council, but on the 5th and 6th, we don't have any meetings. But I'm still wondering if the 5th or the 6th works for anybody that's going to be around, if I could send a note back down to Chicago and say, well, we don't have a regularly scheduled meeting, but there are a few of us that would be around and be willing to have breakfast or lunch with you on those days. You'll be out of town? Out of town? Don't know. Don't know, really. Well, I'll forewarn him that. I hope he's got other things to do up here. I'll be happy to meet with him if they come up because I'll be around. But, okay. I think that was, that was a thing I wanted to ask you guys about, that. And then there was one other thing I was trying to think about beyond Juneteenth that I had participated in before I get into the, it's been so long since we've been together. I was thinking of the, yeah, Walk With the Mayor was last Saturday, and we had a half a dozen people show up, and that was a nice conversation. One of our residents from the West Side showed up and wanted to know, why aren't we doing anything over on the West Side, you know, in the 70th and K Hill area? And of course, we know a lot of this is market driven, and we, I told her a little bit about the study that was underway over there. We did a small area plan there once, and those are broader study going on. And so I don't know if that satisfied her, but they were concerned about things that were going on over there. So I, since I've seen you all last, I've been to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting, and I know some residents have asked me to report out on that. And I'll try to go through this quickly for all of you, but on the three, really, three, four days that were full of activity, one of the things that happened early Friday morning, the Friday morning sessions, we kicked it off, the plenary session, they had the International Well Building Institute there, which talked about healthy buildings in cities, and I was thinking of Member Jackson when this came up. And they're the global leader in healthy buildings, and they work to empower cities to get this healthy building designation, and Miami did it. It took them only two months to get it all done, so that all their buildings were deemed to be healthy and met this sort of well standard. You can put a seal in the window of the particular building, but it's not capital intensive. It's relatively inexpensive to do, and at least that's what they said. But Assistant Manager Schaefer, if you can check in with them at, let's see, wellcertified.com, wellcertified.com. I thought that would be a nice alignment for the work that we're doing around, you know, climate and also just health and wellness in our community. So take a look at that. When we were talking about a healthy metropolitan economy, that was one of the sessions I went to on that Friday morning too, was the Metro Economy Session, and Mayor Fisher from Louisville has a nice way of talking about the importance of the economic strategies for cities. He says, where we can use the city as a platform so people can be the very best version of themselves. I thought that was a nice way to put it. And when I looked at this Metro Economies sheet at the meeting, and I pulled it out tonight, you think about our economy, you know, in terms of our population, I think we're about the 15th largest city in the country, or metropolitan area in the country, and our economy is right there too at number 15. But I was surprised to see that below us were Detroit, the Detroit area, San Diego, Denver, Aurora, Lakewood, that whole Denver metropolitan region, lower on the list than we are, Baltimore, Austin, Texas, Charlotte, all have lower ranked economies, lower production than we do here. It's one of the 100 largest economies in the country. And so I think it speaks very well of the strength and the diversity of our economy here. There was a Chief Recovery Officer there from the U.S. Department of Treasury that talked about the use of ARPA funds and around public safety and infrastructure. And then I also attended, there was a good session on the electrification of the United States transportation system. And of course, we all know that Secretary Buttigieg talks about every transportation decision is a climate impact decision, because we know transportation is the biggest producer of greenhouse gases. But the panel they had was really interesting, including the, I thought particularly interesting was the mayor of Palo Alto, where 30% of the vehicles they sell in Palo Alto are EVs. And they do not have the electrical grid capacity from their utility to be able to allow people to fast charge, to put in fast charging. And so I've raised that issue with Excel. I said, you better be ready for this, because there now is coming $2.5 billion in discretionary grants that are getting, going to get set up this fall for EV charging in cities. And they had somebody from the U.S. Department of Transportation, there was a guy named Charles Small, who talked about that. So we're going to be getting a good look at what might be available here in the fall in terms of grants, and we want to make sure that we're ready for that. And that's under driveelectric.gov. We can take, if anybody's interested in taking a look at that. Mayor Couch from Bloomington, or from Burnsville, ran the small business section. We had a, we had a session, mayors only, on the threat of disinformation that all of you would have found really fascinating, where the panelists were people that really had a lot of value around this issue in terms of talking about disinformation, misinformation, malinformation, and the consequences of all of it, how to deal with it. I thought that was pretty intriguing, and I can give you more offline about that, including a segment on crisis communications, which is valuable to all of us. Sessions on art, might be easier to go through the agenda from day to day just quickly for all of you. Talked about the electrification of the U.S. system. They gave climate protection awards out at noon. I think we'd have a shot at this in the small city category with all the work we've done, and I want to encourage our staff to take a look at that. We had a talk from the President of Colombia. He came to speak to us about how Colombia was helping Venezuela with the immigrants that are showing up in Colombia, or the refugees, actually, the way the situation is in Venezuela. And then there was a session, as I mentioned, around small business support. And that was it for Friday evening, or Friday daytime, and they had an evening event. They started out the day on Saturday with an LGBTQ alliance meeting, and then they had a standing committee meeting on international affairs. I attended that to get an update on a lot of different things that were going on. And a part of that group was the woman who led the trip to Israel that it was on, that was sponsored by the American Jewish Committee. Reno talked a lot about how they're orienting themselves around public art. Hillary Sheevey, the mayor of Reno, had some interesting things to talk about there. We had a session on cryptocurrency. I don't think we want to go into cryptocurrency here too. Miami is all in on cryptocurrency. And, let's see, plenary lunch Saturday. Transportation Communications, where I'm the vice chair, was on Wednesday, that Saturday afternoon, preceded by Metro Economies again. And there's another significant amount of money coming out in terms of a grant program. So that was a helpful meeting as well. And then we learned a little bit about intercity passenger rail and Amtrak. Amtrak's gotten the, I think, out of the infrastructure bill, they're getting over $5 billion, and it's more money than they've gotten in accumulated funds over 60 years.
Wow.
So they're going to really be able to enhance their service, and in fact, they talked about enhancing service into St. Paul with that Amtrak system and, you know, improving the quality of their experience from an efficiency standpoint, also, I think, an upgrade in the equipment. Session on promoting economic mobility in your community. Sunday was Mayor and Business Leaders Plenary Breakfast. We had Target with us, we got invited actually to the Target table. Target's a significant sponsor of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And Lashawn Ward was there to give out some awards earlier in the week from Target, and then our own Tracy Hester, who lives here in Edina, who's head of their governmental affairs, was there as well, and she made remarks that morning. We talked about cybersecurity, closing the racial wealth gap, increasing resilience, future of buildings, just, you know, kind of on and on. I've got extensive notes, and I'll try to go through them and distill them down into something that's, that you might want to read without going into too much depth on it, but there were a lot of good things to be thinking about, and I'll certainly pass that information along to all of you in a little bit more detail when I got time to work on this stuff. So issues that came up that I thought about as I was sitting there taking notes and everything were EV charging stations, higher requirements for new buildings, we want to be thinking about that. Is there more EVs sold? Do we want to think about requiring more in that way? Excel, how do we smart size systems to prevent overload of our utility system? Working with MnDOT and Federal Highway on EV systems, Metro Transit, you know, they're doing free transit down in Kansas City. They don't charge for any transit. And I've already, I've already broached that topic with the Met Council. I had breakfast with Charlie Zelli, the head of the Met Council, the other morning, and I think it'd be more difficult here. They got about $20 million in Fairbox recovery in Kansas City. It's about $100 million here, so it'd be quite a budgetary hit for them. Land use planning, I mentioned Palo Alto. In fact, the mayor of Palo Alto said he'd be happy to be on a Zoom call with us sometime if we wanted to talk about some of the lessons learned there. Oh, this was something interesting too, I thought. Public safety. They're using drones as first responders in Chula Vista, California, which is pretty fascinating, because with there being a shortage of police officers, technology is now even more critical. So they've got people trained to first respond with, and then they know what they, what they need to do and what they need to be prepared for when they show up, when they use that drone. And that they've considered the drones to be a technology force multiplier, and that was, that was, I found interesting. Chula Vista, California. And then this might be something you'd be interested in too, Councilmember Jackson. Seattle has a new, they have got a Green Deal, Green New Deal Oversight Board, and then Boise's working on some significant things around reducing greenhouse gases. And then there's a really great program that a lot of cities love called Better Cities for Pets, and I gave that information to Perry Vetter. So that's enough for tonight, I think, on that topic, and that's it for me. Anybody have anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Got a motion, second, to adjourn our meeting of June 21st, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? We stand adjourned.